There's parking issues, our board members that not leaving to park aside, and we can't get some access space, internet access, so that's what we're, we're just calling someone in, so we have our attorney Cunningham, so that's why there's been like...
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Al. How are you?
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, which one? I don't know if that's the, or one of the new ones.
Thank you.
Nope. Yeah. Yeah. Is that Darren?
Do you have any information on the rights to the...
I wouldn't last here about that much.
Uh, another article ran this morning, and it was superintendent, uh, holding in that... The fact that I didn't, I can't answer that, they don't... Yeah, I could have sent it into the, into the article, but I got it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll reach out to me, I'll send it to her.
If you don't get a job to show us, lose out of your life.
Good morning. I had to go, I had to go rounds and rounds, the third time.
I have a time like...
Outside, and I was, over nine thirty, but then I realized that second time, I was like, leaving, so I went out, and I clicked through the box.
They're putting them through security with their National Guard uniforms and guns?
No.
You're just getting on the internet, not on the speaker.
Traffic is all back to me.
When he finds buttons, though, he's in the first... Yeah, yeah, it comes over, but not far.
I know. What happens in seconds, you never know, you need it all.
Yeah.
Good morning, we'll be, we'll begin momentarily. My girl, Phil. Good morning, I'm Erin Bunn, Vice Chair of the State Board of Education, welcome to the impartial hearing for Killingley. To my right and my board member, Derek Clemmons and Alan Taylor.
Morning.
To my left is Assistant Attorney General, Darren Cunningham. We start with Attorney Stevenson for the record to introduce yourself. Okay.
That didn't sound like you.
Yes, no, not at all. Good morning, I'm Attorney Deborah Stevenson, representing the Killingley Board of Education, and to my right is my client.
I'm Norman Farrick, former Chair of the Killingley Board of Education.
I'm Michael Buchanan, Director of Legal and Governmental Affairs for the State Department of Education. I'm Adrian Feinstein, representing the Concerned Citizens' Powers of Killingley Students.
Okay, Mr. Attorney Feinstein, really, we're beginning with you.
Cross-examination.
Cross-examination, Dr. Nash, if Dr. Nash would have come to the front seat. Good morning, Dr. Nash.
Here, do you want to sign anything? Morning, Dr. Nash, I'm over here. And excuse me, I have whatever everybody else needs to have, you can understand what I say, I have to be treated well, I have to do so. Now, I understand that you felt you were poorly treated at the hearing of November thirtieth, I'm sorry to hear that. Let me explain, our job is to produce an accurate and comprehensive record for this panel to base this judge on. There's been testimony provided by both you and Kelly Martin, that needs verification, explanation, further development, and perhaps even correction. That's what cross-examination is for, there's nothing personal about this, it's about developing a complete and accurate record. So if at any time you think I'm being unfair or abusive, please let me know. Now, surprisingly, your counsel failed to ask you about your background in educational experience, some of the elements of the panel will do so. Now, what's your educational background?
Sure, I graduated from UConn Education Masters Program in nineteen ninety-nine. I began as an elementary school teacher, grades three and one, so then I moved into reading specialist position, anywhere from kindergarten to eighth grade, and then I became a professor of reading at a community college, then at a four-year university. I've been to schools, um, in Ledger's and in Ellen Tim, assistant superintendent in Killingley, and now superintendent.
You covered a whole bunch of my classes over there.
Okay.
So, after your, after Bob McGentle's contract was not renewed, there was an interim superintendent brought in, and then you appointed superintendent. Can you describe the process by which you appointed superintendent?
Sure, um, so there was an executive session, and I left the executive session, Board of Education members discussed, I don't know, because I went into the executive session, but I'm assuming they were discussing, um, appointing me to be superintendent. Um, I came back in, there was an interview, every Board of Education member asked questions of me, and then there was a vote, and there was unanimous vote to appoint me as superintendent.
So as far as you know, there we go, okay.
I don't know, but I don't...
Well, let's do a more general question, you know, this head four B complaint has resulted in substantial negative publicity about Killingley. So why did you decide to want to become superintendent of Killingley?
Sure, um, I grew up in Clemmons, the neighboring town, my family still lives there, I still live in the quiet corner. I moved back from New Jersey after living there for ten plus years, to raise my children in the quiet corner of Connecticut. I believe the people there are pretty, they are tough, they are hardworking, they are my people, and so I feel I have come back to serve. I love the community, there are needs in that community, and I feel I can make, I can make a difference, and I understand that community.
Great. What attributes do you have, right, for the office as a superintendent of Killingley?
Attributes, yes, positivity, I, I want to bring innovation to Killingley Public Schools. We, you know, have so many fantastic programs, so I want to make that widely known through communicating all of the great programs that we're doing, all the offerings that we have for students. Killingley Public Schools is a gem in our area, and I want everyone to know that, and I want to share that up.
Would you agree that transparency and authenticity are two important attributes for the job? You've got to answer the X term over to...
Yeah.
Sorry, I just look forward for it. Now, in terms of your, talking about your background, you've never been a top teacher with mental health services, right? You've been a literacy person, an elementary teacher, right?
Yeah.
In your testimony, you're free to refer to Kathleen Cody, the district's director of mental health. Her position is funded as you testified through ESSO money, that all that money expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Are you funded on a budget for position, if they're accurate?
It's actually not funded through ESSO funds, it's the behavioral health pilot and the mental health specialist grant, those are where our funding comes from.
So both of those are funded through the ESSO, correct?
Uh, not what, they may be, but the behavioral health pilot continues.
You have, you have a representation of the behavioral health fund to continue after September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
Uh, yes, we have, that second installment, I think I mentioned that, so it comes in different installments, we have already one, currently that we're using now, and then there'll be another one that we have, the E D M.
Now, Kathleen Cody provided in to direct therapy students. But you also testified you have a big and hellish group of staff funded out of our ESSO, for your special ed teachers, E C L specialists, V C B As, a nurse, and a attendance coordinator. Do you have a plan on those positions after September thirtieth, the twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, many of them we do, through our operating budget and through other grants.
You say many of them, and not all of them?
Um, I'd have to have a full list and go through one by one, so some of them naturally will go away. We have a building project currently happening where our fourth grade has been displaced into our central office while their building is renovated, and they'll be coming back together, so some of the staff that were in there, not necessarily mental health staff, but some of the staff that were in there, we will not need, we had to kind of duplicate because we had two separate spaces, now we are coming back together, we won't need those staff anymore.
Okay, but the staff that play the instrumental help, which would include E C L specialists, maybe a V C B A, attendance coordinator, those are all going to continue?
Yes, we have either decision packages to go into our operating budget, or they are going to be funded through other grants.
They'll take more global students funding shows?
Some, yes, if, you know, within operating budget, yes.
Okay, can you take a look at respondents, you said, at thirteen, just a, hurry up, it's happy list number five?
So just to, that's your...
No, that's...
No. Our.
Got it?
Yes.
Let's look at the first page, if I'm reading this correctly, Killingley employs exactly the same number of school support staff today as it did in two thousand twenty-one with two exceptions. First, Killingley now has grant-funded Director of Mental Health, and second, you have one more social worker and one fewer school counselor, is that correct?
Uh, let me just take a quick look, and, yeah, so this is looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, not today, but I think you said as of today, if you want to be clear about.
Has there been a change between...
Right, yeah, so one other addition would be a, an additional school psychologist, so on this particular exhibit, it says one, but we actually have two.
Okay, so now, wait, okay, so you have one, one term school psychologist, Laura Weeden, correct?
Uh, we have a different person in place now.
Oh, Laura Weeden, the rest left?
Yes.
Excuse me, Attorney, I just have a quick question, am I on? Yes, I do, okay. I did, I was blinking. I'll just speak loud. When you're talking about that time period that you were referring to, has the student population gone down in that period of time, or how was the student population?
It's our enrollment relatively low.
Black during that whole time that you're just referring to?
Yeah, it did, it was very black.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you have one full-time staff, school psychologist, and you have one contracted school psychologist, right?
Yes.
And that school psychologist has lasted full-time, correct?
Yes.
How, how much is that?
Uh, three, three days a week.
Was that done for budgetary reasons?
Uh, that was what the individual had negotiated with her agency.
Okay, um, how much, what proportion of school psychologists time is spent counseling students?
In Killingley, very little.
That's not unusual. Now, as for social workers, you seem to have one new staff member, one outside contracted social worker, and it looks like Kelly Best is now down to point four-five of an F T D, is that correct?
Sure, I can explain that, we have Kelsey Best, is half-time at Goodyear, however, that position is made full just recently by an agency.
Excuse me, Kelsey Best, what position does she hold?
Social worker at Goodyear.
Thank you.
Well, is, is that that right, first name?
He got intermediate one.
So there's a new hire that these sheets are providing, and it's a new hire, it's a new contract. And as the school counselors, you have five brand-new counsel this year, correct?
I believe we have five brand-new ones, yes.
Yeah, and part of Placido is one down to forty-four, five, and that's correct, and you have a eight.
Yes, point five-five, um, yes.
Now, how much, how much does school counselors time is spent counseling individual students?
Twenty.
Well, can you look at the I twenty-one, my exhibit?
You could tell me what it's called, I don't...
Well, it's a, it's kind of part of the State Department of Education that had the sample job description of a school counselor. One of the new arts that I've told, I just ended up waiting on, I don't really have that.
Oh, I don't have that. Oh, I don't have that.
Did I have the right one, I said?
I have not seen it.
Okay, now, if you look at the bottom of page three and the top of page, it starts on the bottom of page three. You'll see twenty-four duties and responsibilities of a high school level school counselor. Are these roughly the same duties that are performed by school counselors in Killenly?
I just don't get to read that.
I might just remark here that that exhibit is not admitted yet, so, I'm sorry, that exhibit is not admitted yet, it's proposed, so.
You need to turn your mic on.
It is.
It's not working.
It is, sorry.
Is I seeing, he's just asking, what is it about these exhibits and either way? Is there any question to you?
The question was whether these duties that are in the sample are roughly the same as the duties school counselors have at Killenly, the high school.
After a quick read, I would say yes.
Most of those duties, would you agree to be not involved counseling individual students?
Again, I would object to any questions about her opinion of this document when it's not, foundational questions would be proper, but her opinion about it when she said she's not familiar with it.
I'm asking her about listed duties. I'm not asserting the document is correctly or incorrect, I'm just saying whether those things in Killenly, she said they're largely the same with Killenly and I said, you know, it looks like most of those functions do not involve direct counseling students and she's looking to see what, to bridge that.
But she would be test, she would be testifying, she would be testifying on a document not in evidence and I would object to that. Dr. Nash, may I?
Yes, I think there's actually a lot of counseling that's in this document, however, I don't know if the intent of this description is saying that all of these are equally distributed amongst counselors days. I think some are probably more heavily weighted in their jobs, but I don't have, I can't tell you exactly how much.
And you can't, can you tell me how, what proportion of time of your counselors spend on a duty of counseling?
In a day, I don't have a date on that.
Okay, very good. Do you know how many two-on-one calls Killenly staff made during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm not sure if we have twenty-two, twenty-three or twenty-one, twenty-two. Can I look in here again?
Yeah, just tell me where you're looking. Let me come back and get my notes.
All right, we have that in our exhibit.
Exhibit nine.
But I will say that I am not sure, oh, no, I think we have in there, actually.
Okay. Here. Well, I see that on the first page of exhibit R nine, you have two-on-one calls for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, plastic to March, and I don't know why there's an A, that the, this was applied before that.
That would be my guess, I'm not sure of that.
That's data that you do keep a regular basis?
Don't we keep track of this, yes?
Yes, I think it would be helpful if you could fill out the twenty-two, twenty-three school year or provide twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Thank you. Now, you listed a number of programs in your testimony, including Pixie, S and L specialists, and Discovery, et cetera, that existed long before the C R report, correct?
Yeah.
So, given the amount of mental health issues raised in the C R report, would you agree that these programs have failed to address the needs of all services in Killenly?
I don't know if there's a direct correlation between those programs and that survey, but certainly there are students that we, you know, need, need to support, you know.
Okay. Now, you were in attendance at Killenly where that session began, September thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, correct?
Yeah.
Mister Flanagan, you were.
Yeah.
You heard Kathleen Cody explain the differences between the sort of counseling a school employee could provide and what a private therapist or C H R could provide, correct?
Yeah.
Do you remember that distinction?
Yeah, so what I remember was that C H R would be more consistent, you know, you would be seeing the clinicians weekly, more consistently for consistency versus, it would be more consistent, probably can get into some concerns and issues more deeply than a school counselor could.
Did she, we can ask her later, but let me ask your memory, did she not also say that the whole of the school counselor of a situation, you have this kid back in class, to get the kid regulated, not to deal with underlying issues?
Yeah, I don't recall exactly everything she said, to be completely honest, but that's always, you know, that's always the goal, right, is to make sure that we get our students in a place where they can do learning, yeah.
Okay. So when you testified that Killenly was meeting the needs of all services, you were not saying that Killenly was meeting the underlying mental health needs of all services, correct?
Can you repeat that?
So when you testified that Killenly was meeting the needs of all services, you were not saying that Killenly was meeting the underlying mental health needs of all services, correct?
Killenly was meeting the underlying need of all, I don't, I don't know what that question is asking me.
Well, did the specific Killenly was providing situational therapy, they were not dealing with the underlying mental health needs of students, correct?
I, how, I can't say what the underlying mental health needs of all students are, that would be unfair for me to say.
Well, the C R report did document some serious issues with suicidality and self harm, correct?
But not the underlying cause, I tried to, you saying cause, I'm not sure if I understand what you're asking me.
I'm asking whether the therapy provided by an outside provider at C H R is fundamentally different than the type of, type of counseling provided by school officials.
Yeah, I think I just answered that, it's definitely more consistent, more targeted.
Now, you testified about Killenly's suicide protocols, correct?
Yeah.
Those protocols are aimed at recognizing the indications that a student might be considering taking his own life, and they don't help the student, those protocols do not help the student deal with underlying distress leading to that condition, correct?
In our policy, that's, that's not covered in the policy.
When you agreed with the question from your counsel, you never heard the situation in which a student was in need of mental health treatment or intervention that you have been unable to provide, you spoke, correct?
Have I personally, I have not.
There has never been a situation where a student is showing a steady, high possible suicidality that you have not been able to provide that had need of mental health services, correct?
Me personally?
The school system?
Well, that's two different questions. Me personally is different than the school system.
I was asking about your testimony, where you said that you've never heard a situation in which a student was in need of mental health treatment or intervention that the school was unable to provide.
As I said, no, as I said last time, in my role of assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction, I have not, that would not be something I would have direct contact or knowledge of.
Okay, so your testimony should not be ready to say that Killenly has ever been able to, has never been unable to provide for mental health students.
I don't know that.
Okay, perfect. Now, you testified that between September of twenty-two and April of twenty-three, six hundred students came to respond to that, correct?
Yeah, what year on that, you said again?
September, it was twenty-two, twenty-three school year through April twenty-three.
Yeah, right, I think that's what, it didn't work the exhibit yet.
That's twenty students a week, right?
Wait, is that, is that right? That's, I think the year's wrong on that. I don't think the year is right. I think that was in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so six hundred and eleven, is that what you're saying, six hundred and eleven?
I was going to the transcript where you said six hundred and eleven, but it's still a staggering amount, it's a first, a staggering amount of students, correct?
Yes.
That's twenty students a week, right? The thirty-week period?
Right.
Now, at the school board meetings, so January twenty-sixth, February twenty-eighth, February twenty-three, March ninth, March sixteenth, March twenty-three, April thirteenth and April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the records of those minutes reflect the numerous parent students and school staff, school staff who pay for the school-based health cover. You were in attendance with the students, right?
I think I was in attendance at most of them, I think that's why I wasn't out yet.
And those stories during the three-minute people's book often include these personal stories documenting the mental, I met mental health needs in Killenly, correct?
Yes, there were, yes.
And there was, you know, March ninth, where two students, Sydney Zicarella and Alicia Gator spoke about all of them, I met mental health needs in Killenly, correct?
I don't particularly, but I remember the individual, yeah.
Yeah, you testified you've not heard any complaints of any kind that students' mental health needs were not being met.
Yes, me personally, has anyone come to me personally? This is how I interpreted your question. So have I, did I hear those comments, that public comment? I did. Did anyone come to me personally? I did not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, I do want to approach to have you look at this document, but I apologize for the poor quality of the, the screenshots. This is post exhibit twenty-two, two of yours. What was it?
I believe this is a copy of the presentation that was given on February seventh, twenty twenty-two, it was a public presentation about school health.
You said February seventh, I thought it was January twenty-second, did you, in fact, the board meeting, February ninth, so I.
No, I know, I'm almost positive it was February seventh and then we had a board meeting a couple days back, so I could be wrong, but I'm almost positive.
Remember being on the other side?
I don't.
What was your role in that presentation?
I was up at some panel and I was presenting some of the slides with, along with other people.
And those was on the panel?
So, we were ten, Angela Lee, I believe, Marie Thierry.
Let me stop you there, say, what was at least Thierry's role in that one time?
Principal of the high school and there were, I want to say three other people from generations, but it might have been two, and I think Melissa Myers was one of them and I don't recall any of the other people. And if there were other people there, I'm sorry if I left them out, I don't remember.
I do. So I asked if this being made at the public table.
I haven't heard anything about authentication or foundational questions or are these witnesses qualified to, to deal with that particular exhibit?
Well, she just, she just said, she recognized it as, as that presentation, she gave the date, she said she was on the panel that presented it, I don't know whether authentication you got.
She didn't create it.
So you're objecting to, you're objecting to the exhibit?
Yes.
So what's your response to the document?
There's no requirement that she created it, she obviously created a part of it, she was on the panel that presented it and she recognized it as that document, so I don't see if there's any issue with that issue.
So can you tell us the exhibit number that's proposed?
Exactly, we got the exhibit number.
Sorry, that's proposed, okay.
Yeah, I, interviewer twenty-two.
Okay.
I don't think this is working, but Dr. Nash, is the exhibit that we're looking at, is that in the board minutes or posted on the website? Did it become an official document?
I believe we did post it on the website, it's not, it wouldn't be here anymore because we have a new website now, but.
But it was at one time?
I'm almost positive that after this meeting, we did post the slides.
And were you a participant in putting together the presentation?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you exactly what, I know we were all in the shared document, generations put together quite a bit of it.
But you participated in the previous.
Yeah, yeah.
Attorney Stevenson, do you have any further comments? Attorney Stevens, do you have any further comments?
I think the person who created it is the proper person to be testifying now.
Well, she just testified she was part of that creation, and it was on, it was by the law, right?
I heard her testify she was part of the presentation.
You need to turn on your microphones.
It is on, it is on. She, she was, she testified, I believe, that she was part of the presentation, not part of the making of that document.
I just asked her if she was part of the making of it.
Dr. Nash, can you clarify that? We've heard of the making. I know you said that most of it was made by generations, but did you participate in making parts of that?
I...
Presentation?
I may have typed some of this in. Do I know exactly which parts I typed in? No, I don't. Um, yes, we were all, multiple people were creating it.
Okay. Yeah, because she said there was multiple people on the panel. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So they, your checks are double, though.
So, interviewer twenty-two is now full exhibit.
If you look at page four of that, where the school nurse reports a fifty percent increase in visits related to anxiety, depression, and PTSD over the past three years, that sixty percent of cases are somatic complaints related to mental health, and the nurses support students that cannot address the root of the problem. See that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, in answer to a question from your attorney, you said there was no way you could determine whether these visits were for injury, illness, or med management. That's not accurate, is it?
It is accurate. I, my back words was that our data collection system would have no way to delineate specific reasons for students other than med management or injury. Um, I believe, if I recall right, this was, um, kind of anecdotal data that was collected from nurses, um, just talking to other people. That's how I believe that this came about. There's no way in our SNAP program that we use to collect data on nursing. I've already looked. There, you, there's no way to find out exactly why students were there, other than the large categories.
Do you doubt the accuracy of page four of this one?
No, I don't doubt the accuracy of it.
Very good. Uh, tell me, why are you on that panel? You said that your job was curriculum. Uh, this does not seem to be anything polyvinous in the purview of the existence of a pretend exhibit.
Right. Um, I was asked by my superintendent to present the panel.
And what piece of presentation did you make?
Um, I do remember that I think the, um, C-RAC, it's really hard to read on this, but it would be one, two, three, four, five, five, six are the, um, the C-RAC, are, are from the C-RAC survey. I do remember talking about that data. I, I don't remember if I did any other part. Oh, I know, I know there was another person on the panel, um, Lindsay Coligan, who was our, our former Director of guidance. She reported out on some of the counseling. I remember that.
Okay. Uh, incidentally, did your records back at Kelly Lee, do you have a better copy of, of that?
Uh, yes, I do.
I would be delighted to substitute a better copy of the presentation for what I attribute today.
Sure thing.
Okay. Now, on page thirteen, there's a slide that shows the difference between what a school counselor does and what a licensed therapist does, correct?
Yes, yes.
Did you just read that in the evening?
I don't disagree.
Your page thirteen, thank you. And incidentally, as I mentioned before, I do request that the panel order all three materials to produce exhibits that are patented, so that we can actually buy documents in the future.
Objection from the State Department. Attorney Stevens, I know it's odd timing, but, uh, did you, I'm sorry, did you hear like, uh...
I did. I have no problem with patination.
Oh, progress.
Just very poor quote, "I have no problem with patination." I, let me move on to another subject. Did you ever personally see any emails, letters, or communication from particularly good women advising the Kelly Lee Board of Education to take no steps to give mental health from Kelly Lee students at any time?
I personally did not.
Now, you already testified that, uh, that presentation, that I, twenty-two, which I have in front of you, which is that exhibit, contains charts of data from the SAREF report?
It does.
That's what Kelly Martin testified, that she did not know of the SAREF report until after the March sixteenth, twenty-two, twenty-two vote.
Andrew, can you, you've got to get more into your mic. Thank you.
I just want to note, this is the first instance that I've ever known of where people could hear shirt crying. It's a call, Michael.
I know that, that's how I make an answer.
You need, which part of the...
We mentioned the name, and I...
Uh, I'll go back. I'll ask the question again.
So we'll draw the question.
I'll withdraw and re-ask the question. Kelly Martin testified that she did not know of the SAREF report until after the March sixteen, twenty-two vote. That's, that's clearly wrong. She was at this presentation. Is that correct?
An objection that she, he's asking this witness about what another witness said. Look, it proper would be to call the other witness who actually said it.
So required that they do that?
Can you repeat the question?
You've got to move your mic. There you go.
Kelly Martin testified that she did not know of the SAREF report until after the March sixteen, twenty-two vote. That's clear, that's clearly wrong. She was at this presentation, correct?
Objection in the lower room. You can answer.
Was she at this presentation? I think so, but I am not a hundred percent sure. I, I was up at the panel, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Uh... Now, was there ever a time during board meetings, particularly in the spring of twenty-two, that public comment was not allowed?
Public comment not allowed? I don't recall that. I don't, I, I can't remember a meeting where we didn't have a public comment not allowed.
Well, do you remember, um, then on March nine, Chair, then Chairwoman Jolly announced that a comment would be limited to twenty minutes on each side, and when motion was made to extend that time, the motion was voted down?
I do remember that, yes.
Okay. Do you remember at a board meeting of May twenty-fifth, twenty-two, that Christine Rosati Randle was told to sit down because the school-based health center was no longer being discussed per policy?
I believe I do recall that.
Okay, I do. Uh... Now, Kelly Martin testified that the EastCon contract, um, which is a, it's a, it's a, did not need to go through the board, but any contract for a school-based health center needed to. Can you please tell me, your understanding that what contracts brought by providers need to go through the board and what should be handled administratively?
Uh, which, which are handled administratively. So, um, we handle professional development contracts. Um, inadvertently, they're going through the board because they, you know, there's money attached to it. So they have to get approved with the grant. They're approved in the grant or in the operating budget, and they're approved in the operating budget. So they all are approved, right, by Board of Education because of cost. Um, you know, we, we're working with agencies now. Um, those are actually brought to the board because we have to transfer from salary line to project line because it's an agency now, not a salary line. So all those get brought. Um, actually, so many contracts we probably have. Um, I guess they're all approved by the board because they all go through either operating budget or a grant.
But that's different.
But are they pulled out? No, maybe not.
But that's different than specific contracts, right? The contract with Generations or with CHR has to be specifically approved by the board, but the contract with EastCon, which provides not, is not back to cellular services, did not have to be specifically approved by the board. Which is interesting, why that was the case.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. The EastCon contract you're talking about is the pyramid professional development firm, KCS. Is that what we're talking about?
Uh, so, page twenty-seven, I just want to talk to you about, about, you both like...
Is that, was that it?
I don't know.
It's, uh, twenty-two, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's twenty-seven minutes, you know?
It was admitted.
Thank you.
It has been fully made into this special item.
Thank you very much. So that's, do we talk about that EastCon?
Of the EastCon, I'm related to it. Uh, the witness asked whether it's professional development that I directed, or do they contract that she held. Do you consider it professional development, I'm trying to think about?
Yes, it is.
It is?
This is for pyramid, um, training for the essential school.
I think it works for it, although I don't see that on the face of the contract.
If you look at page six, it looks like it there.
Page six?
Yes.
Are we looking at two different contracts? Isn't there a initial contract on the first five pages, and then there's a, a specific contract that started on page seven, that started page six?
I think it's the whole thing.
You do?
It goes up to page eight where it's fine.
Okay, so if it's, if it's professional development...
Yes.
That does not have, the kind of specific contract that has to be approved by the board?
This wasn't approved by the board, so I'm not, I don't know if I fully understand that question. This was in a Title II grant that was approved by the board. Um, they knew what this was, so I, I don't know if I get that question.
I'm just basing it off the testimony of Kelly Martin, that this was not approved specifically approved by the board.
Okay, it was, it was in Title II, so...
Then there's, of course, a difference between that the contract specifically approved by the board, and, uh, budget items that support a contract need to be approved by the board. And of course, all budget items have to be approved by the board, correct?
All budget items, did you say?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Nash, do all grants have to be approved by the board? Yes. Thank you.
Well, let me follow up on that. Do all proposals for grants have to be approved by the board before they're submitted?
Yes.
Okay. So before you submit any application for any grant whatsoever, add applications approved by the board administration?
Yes.
On March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, was the special meeting of the Kelly Lee Board of Education, at which time the administration's proposal to set up a school-based health center with Generations was voted down. You were at that meeting, at least four minutes?
Yes.
What was your understanding at that time of why, of why it was voted down? What was said at that meeting that told you why it was voted down?
I believe, trying to think, it was set at that meeting. Um, a concern about, um, parental rights. I think it was set at that meeting. I, I may, I'm sorry. I don't know if it was that meeting or another meeting.
Is your belief at that time that the fundamental reason it was voted down was because of parental rights, is that correct?
Yes.
What did that mean?
Uh, that, um, students could receive, uh, mental health, uh, services by Generations at that time without a parent consent.
Had you reviewed the Generations contract of the Generations that were petitioned?
Yes.
And did it cover those issues?
Yes.
As a pact, the procedures, they were petitioned by the Generations. Is it in any way different than what's been provided by CHR now?
No. Also, I think there was an issue. I, I want to say it was at that meeting. There had been some, I guess, negative reviews of Generations, and that was another reason that came up. Again, I have to go back and look at the minutes. Meetings are, are like a year out now, so that may have been another reason that was brought up.
All right, this is a, this is a very, this is a request. The tape of that meeting, the video tape of that meeting is all over posted on our website. Can you find that personally?
I think that was the one where it was, it, the, it was a technical issue and it didn't get recorded, but I'll double-check that.
All board meetings are...
No, I'm, no, not like a, like a...
The current kind of, it's a native, it's a, it's sad to say.
You said tape. I found me.
Us old timers talk about things that are recorded and taped.
I figure vinyl collection.
What do you got on me?
I know.
Officially recorded?
Yes.
But you said it is no longer available, you believe.
There was, I think that was the one where we didn't have our IT person that normally does it, wasn't available. We used someone else who wasn't familiar with the equipment, and then it, we thought we were recording, and it didn't happen. Yes, right, whatever, yes.
There, there are minutes of meeting, um, and I, uh, I do have all the minutes as opposed exhibit here from, uh, two thousand twenty-two, um, uh, which, uh, because this was, we sort of have a copy that can, that's true, to verify those, and I would, I would like to make that as exhibit. Maybe we can do that by agreement, because you have a whole variety of minutes, selected minutes, uh, as opposed exhibit as well, uh, for state or state.
What, what exhibits are you proposing, uh, what minutes are you proposing to add?
The board minutes that took place during the year twenty-twenty-two.
All of them in two thousand twenty-two? I have no objection.
And that is exhibit, uh...
Page doesn't appear.
I said, page does not appear.
Turn to my...
That's exhibit twenty-three.
Interviewers?
Interviewer's twenty-three.
So interviewer's twenty-three is now admitted as a full exhibit.
I have a question.
Thank you, Attorney Stevens.
More, Dr. Nash.
Good morning.
Has it always been the case that the Board of Education has approved the grants, had to approve the grants that were being applied for? Because I recall, um, Ms. Kelly Martin testified that there was a four, I think a four thousand dollar grant that, um, had to be interrogated, and then afterwards, I may be wrong, that afterwards, the board had to approve the grants. But so has it always been the case that the board approves But so has it always been the case that the board approves all the grants applied for and approved?
So I'm going to pack that a little bit and explain it better.
Thank you.
So there are always grants that need both board approval. So you can't submit without checking when you have fourth approval. So those have always been approved by the Board of Education. And, but not all grants need that approval. So when you were referencing $4,000, that was the $4,000. I believe that was an art professor that had been allocated from furniture and supplies for the School Based Health Center. That was a much larger grant. That actually was not approved by the board. But I believe it was. I can't remember the date. I want to say. Just looked at his timeline too, am I going to remember the date? There was a date where there was a Board of Education meeting. And I think it was September 14, 2022, where the board had asked that they knew all grants before submitting.
You satisfied my question.
Okay.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is come and get that, that last exhibit back to you.
Okay.
And also give you the minutes of the meeting, the special meeting of March 16.
Okay.
2022. That's a piece of I-23 just admitted. But ask if this refreshes your recollection for the read?
Got it.
Does that refresh your recollection?
It doesn't have specific reasons.
That went, were you personally aware of board interest in racial challenge?
Okay. I'm going to say that was probably the spring of 2022.
After the complaint was filed, then, or the complaint was filed, correct?
I, I think so.
What's your memory about how that issue came up, racial challenge?
It was a program that was brought up by a board member to implement within our schools.
Dr. Nash, do you recall what board member?
Yes, Jason Mascaren.
Thank you.
And eventually was implemented, right?
Yes.
From your point, do you have that power?
So I attended the Killenley intermediate school presentation. How did it go? Like, could you be more specific?
Well, I'll tell you, we, I received a whole bunch of reports of students who felt threatened, traumatized, really upset by the presentation. Did you feel, did you say?
Did I feel traumatized?
No, did you hear the same thing?
Oh, I did hear that, yeah. I, but I did not have personal conversations with students.
Why did they feel traumatized?
I don't know, I didn't have any of those conversations.
Right, but you watched the presentation. It was already said that it was upsetting or traumatizing?
So there were, you know, videos of school shooting, column buying. So that, you know, always can be upsetting to watch, the recordings or the nine one calls.
Did you, did you or superintendent review the presentation before you gave it to students?
I did not watch the video. There was a website and I think you could look through some of the resources because there's resources attached to it for like a club that could be formed afterwards based on that program. I did not watch the actual video presentation prior.
Had you watched it, would you agree to have it charred for students?
I don't know. I've been in many districts where we've had, you know, the Dylan's Wingman. That's another one that's very similar to that.
Say that, say that again, Dylan's.
Yeah, it's a Sandy Hook program. We had that in my previous district. I don't know, are you looking for my personal opinion on it?
Yes, yes.
If you're looking for my personal opinion, I personally don't. Like when I, when I am watching that kind of material. But that's, that's my personal eye, opinion. I don't like that.
Was pre-sent slots before students were shown this?
I want to say yes, but I will find that out. I cannot recall.
That, that is an important point, as to whether or not.
Yeah, I'm almost positive there was. I just can't remember specifically if it was a letter. I, I have to go back. I can find that out very quickly.
Okay. Killenley invented the delete program last summer, correct?
Yes.
This was a program you pushed by the CHR or the state?
Supported by the State Department.
I'm sorry?
Supported, on what push, but highly encouraged.
I said State Department of Education, I didn't say the State Board. The State Board, because people are still up.
Highly encouraged.
You said you visited 100 students at 50 homes, something like that, remember? That you personally?
That you personally, right. So our attendance coordinator, we had some other staff that were being paid through grants that could accompany her. Kathy Cody, our Director of Mental Health, also accompanied our attendance coordinator, yeah.
At every one of those meetings?
I'm sorry, what was?
At every one of those visits?
I don't know, what's the first part of that question? Was that everyone?
Did that, did that, the, the tennis coordinator go to every single one of those visits?
Oh, yes.
Kathy Cody, you referred everyone?
No, not everyone. I think we had other people that accompanied her on these visits. Not everyone.
And so you had at least a tennis coordinator, perhaps other staff doing nothing else this past summer other than doing these home visits, is accurate?
Okay. There's other things too, but that was part of it.
Well, I mean, that's, if there are 50 homes in 10 weeks, that's a visit a day, right?
Sometimes two visits a day.
Okay. How were each visit taken?
That was really up to the family. Sometimes Christina May, who was the attendance coordinator, would listen to a family for, you know, over an hour if that's what they wanted, if they needed that time to talk. She'd be with them in parks, at Dunkin' Donuts, at the library, if they didn't feel comfortable meeting in the home. She spent many hours at Dunkin' Donuts.
It was a time-consuming task.
Time-consuming.
And for the benefit of the State Board of Education, you can talk about what's a great success of us, correct?
Yes, very proud of it.
Dr. Nash, I just have a couple of questions. And you said there's 50 home visits, is that what you said?
Well, that was a test point. I think students did 50 visits.
And these were all 50 different homes or were they repeated visits?
50 homes and then about 100 kids, multiple kids.
And since this was a summer, have any of these homes been revisited?
Absolutely, yes.
In your testimony, you said that at, in March of 22, you had social worker opening at the, opening at the elementary level, and a council opening at the high school level, correct?
Yes, I also said I'm not entirely sure with that one little snapshot of March 2022, but yes.
Would you agree that as of April 14, 22, Killenley was short 13 teachers, three specialized teachers, one social worker, one school counselor, and one security guard?
I may want to ask our Director of Human Resources that exact date. But we've had staffing troubles in the past yet.
Okay. Now, we'll talk about CHR a little bit. Is there one therapist or two therapists working there?
Two.
There are two?
Yes.
Where does the second one start?
I believe it was second week in October. But Kathy Cody would know dates that day.
Could you provide, do you know the names of these therapists?
I do not know, no.
Okay, that's supposed to be a hard question.
No, I don't know their, I, I think I know, but I don't want to mispeak, so.
And do you know the licensure of these individuals? What do they license that?
Licensed counselors, but I don't know what, if there's specific certifications that they have, like a family. I don't, Kathy Cody would know their specific license.
Okay. And is CHR looking for a third therapist at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and the two therapists that you have now, how much do each of them work with other community schools?
There are three days in Killenley School.
Yes, yes, but how about each individual?
I think we have one that works two days and one that works one day.
Okay, and the two days are at the intermediate school and the one day is the high school, correct?
Yes, but there are. Could be getting this wrong, by the way. But there, I believe that there is one person that is at the high school and she's also at the middle school. And then the second person is at the middle school.
This is a reading school, right?
It's a reading school, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You choose it up by your names. You said the CHR is fully staffed, quote, in terms of student slots. Can you explain what you know about that?
Right, so in terms of, you know, counseling appointments, that's what I'm, when I say slots, that's what I mean, counseling appointments. Right now, we are pretty much at capacity, so we do have a waitlist.
Oh, so you're not fully staffed based on student needs, right? Is it a waitlist?
Yeah, that's why we are looking, CHR should say is looking at or another counselor.
Dr. Nash, how many people are on the waitlist? How many students are on the waitlist?
Um, I, you'd have to ask, it changes every day because that students move out. You know, if they finish a session of.
Kind of all markers, you know, 20s or 21s.
I think it is, no, I don't think it's in the hundreds, but I want to say it's in the 20s by, definitely clarified there. Yes.
And you testified that 23 students are now receiving therapy from CHR.
Uh, that was as of, you know, two weeks ago. That number constantly changes, so that's gone up a little bit.
Waitlist is almost as long if the number of students actually receive the services.
Yes, I mean, another counselor.
Okay. And as of today, the only way apparent, a teacher to refer a student or a student to refer them to us to CHR, does it go through a school counselor, is that correct?
Well, they could certainly talk to administration too, and that's not the only way. Talk to administration, talk to a counselor, Kathy Cody.
And when you say administration?
Any one of the building leaders. And even if they wanted to reach out to their teacher, I mean, they're, we're all working in the same building.
Well. Have you provided any instructions to teachers as to how they refer students to CHR?
Mainly counselors, because that's, if a teacher receives something like that, she would just go to, she would just go to the counselor.
And the counselor has been instructed on how to refer students to CHR?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is there written, is there written documentation of it?
Um, I, I don't know, you have to ask Kathy, I'm not, Kathy truly, I'm not sure.
Okay, is, is there some sort of screening process for a counselor to undertake in force setting of students to CHR?
I'm not aware of that.
Sure, let's follow up on that. In answer to your attorney's question, you would read the statement, quote, from the board of CHR, you are providing services to students. Did you meet compliance with services provided by the Public League Board of Education and the services provided by CHR?
Are they the same? No.
You testified that the Public League Board never failed to account any interventions to address these students, correct?
Yes.
In March 9, 2022, there was a board decision package for specialized teachers, which the board voted down, correct?
What was the date on that?
March 9, 22.
Okay.
Does that exist with your statement that the, that the board never failed to account any interventions to address these students?
I don't know if I would call a specialized teacher an intervention. That would be a budget decision, a staffing decision.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, 2022 or 2023? I said 22, March 29, I think, sorry. Now, you spoke about ESS as a mental health provider, if you're testing, correct?
Yes.
So ESS only works with students with IP, correct?
Yes, in our building, yes.
Now, you testified that you do not consider the mental health needs in Killenley to be serious, although you did say they were concerning. Do you understand how students and parents might think you're minimizing the mental health service of students in Killenley by that statement?
Perhaps, but I hope that my explanation around my benchmark for the word serious would provide clarity for that. That serious was, to me, in that 21, 22 school year. And I believe we have made progress. And now I would not use the word serious, but I certainly could use the word concerning, yes.
We have no data today. The last data we have of the, of the amount of students that help me was the CHR report in December 24, right, correct?
Yes.
And so your statement that it was serious then, but not serious then was based entirely on your impressions of what sort of schools was that, correct?
Our impressions, our climate survey data that we receive from students, our attendance data, just generally talking to students, yes. Our number of counseling, the lots of counseling visits has gone down. So there is some data, yes, is this the CHR report data? No, it is not that data, but it is other data. No, it is not that data, but it is other data.
You, uh, last time talked about the evidence of the CHR study.
Thank you.
Is there anything more you can provide, any more information you can provide today about that?
Yes. So, we will be, um, giving that, um, follow-up or the C-RAC survey, um, the second week of January.
What, we do have given it?
Just like we did last time, we'll let parents know that we're going to be, um, giving that out to students. Usually they take it during their, like, homeroom time, if you will, prime, um, period, their building set, they would open and take that.
Both, like, a little more regular G-CAD, exactly how it starts?
Okay, um. Teachers receive the link and then they share that with the students in their homeroom and the students click on it and then they answer the question.
And that's how students do it, so students felt, correct?
Well, we can't force anyone to do it. Um. If they choose not to, we highly encourage it.
Okay. And how does that differ from the administration of the DESA?
Oh, okay. Sure, uh, the DESA is a little bit different because that is a, um, an observational survey that teachers would, um, do for their students. So, it's a series of eight questions, talking about FEL-type skills that they noticed that their students in their homeroom have and they're filling it that out, um, based on their observations of the students.
And you provide parental notice consent for that?
Yes.
You provide parental notice or consent of the CHR study?
Uh, what, yes, back when we first gave it, yes.
So, parents have to consent before they're tested to do it, or is it?
So, we let people know and if they, at the bottom it says that if you'd like to opt your, your student out, contact the school. So, anyone that wants to opt out, they can.
Uh. Uh. Now, the March study in twenty-two, or the Lisa Higgins of the Killingly Education Association said, quote, "We see too many students fail to reach their full academic schedule due to their own personal mental health concerns. We see students who are crying or shaky from panic attacks. We see high-performing students who are probably under the pressure of expectations," end quote. Did you disagree with her at that time?
We never disagreed with someone's statement.
Did you see any of that in schools, sir?
Did I personally? No.
Did you see any of that now?
No.
Okay. Uh.
A question. Dr. Nash, how often are you in the schools?
I am in the schools every week. Um, do I get to every, now, as a superintendent, am I in the school, every school, every week? Um, some weeks, yes. Um, but I try to be in at least a couple of buildings a week.
So, you're not, you're not a fixture in the schools on a daily basis?
Daily basis, no. I was able to get in as the assistant superintendent a lot more than I am now, um, as I find it.
I would imagine that.
But I am, I am in a lot of classrooms.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm trying to, I'm asking that because I'm trying to square the fact that you are not in the schools daily, yet you have an, you have an ability to measure, um, serious versus, um, what's the other, so where do you, concerning. So, I'm trying to, maybe empirically, your, your gazing thing, but I'm trying to square, like, if in fact you are not in the schools on a daily basis, yet you are able to say, um, it sounds like unequivocally, that no, it's not serious, it's just concerning.
So, I speak with a lot of staff. I also speak with my entire administrative team every other week, my cabinet every week, and my principals every other week. So, I rely on them to tell me the pulse of their building.
Got it.
Is this your cabinet or your, the other teams that you're referring to? Any students are fit on those?
No, I have my own student committee. That's the unit engagement committee.
So, there are a couple dozen students now receiving counseling from CHR, correct? It was twenty-two, last two weeks ago, but maybe it's a higher level.
Yes.
Do you have seven hundred and ninety high school students, or?
I guess a little less than that, but I think the last time I looked at the enrollment report, it was seven sixty-four.
Oh.
I don't know. I have, I just looked at that enrollment report. It's not, it's in my, it's in my first, actually. Um. I don't, I don't think it was seven ninety. I could double check when we get a break.
Okay, that's, that's a huge drop from where you were at the ER department to the state department.
Okay, I'll double check it.
And about six seventy individuals?
I think that sounds about right.
Okay. And the CHR, the CHR figures were that twenty to thirty percent of students had needed mental health counseling due to self-harm versus suicidal ideation, correct?
Are you taking the whole, um,
I'm taking those people.
Adding up the entire, all the questions that were in that particular chart?
Well, yeah, about any, I mean, we had the, um, yeah. The CHR report.
Yes.
Which I put in the, we said the degree of twenty, um, it has, uh, twenty-eight percent of kids say they had thought about hurting themselves.
Right.
Eighteen percent said they hurt themselves on purpose. Uh, twenty-nine percent said, uh, sad or hopeless almost every day or two weeks.
Yes.
And fifteen percent seriously considered their attempt at suicide.
Okay, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Okay. And so, uh, if, you know, we take those fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred students and look at those parts of portions, the twenty-three or twenty-four, twenty-five students, CHR is really just the iceberg. Right? The, the center of the iceberg, yes. Right?
Yes, certainly why we are looking to hire more clinicians for CHR.
Uh. With the, uh, I recognize I've not created any foundation for the CHR report, but, uh, attorney statements have put in another version of it. Would you be able to accept it in, uh, I twenty as a full exhibit?
What, could you describe what that exhibit is exactly?
It's the CHR Killingly Youth Survey twenty-twenty-one, I think it's a copy of it.
It's not any, any, I have no objection.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
No, no, okay, sorry. That's, I twenty would be able to accept it.
So, interviewers twenty is now full exhibit?
Uh. Now, I don't, we could use it to sort of just confirm the figures of that. Right now, if a student called the CHR therapist without a quiet, without a, without his own parents?
Uh, well, no calling. Um. I guess they could call CHR in Killenly.
Right.
Yes.
But could they go to the CHR office in the high school or the intermediate school and see a therapist without the consent of their parents?
I don't think it's set up that way, um, because it's not a drop-in where you would just drop in to the, to CHR office. I mean, if a student came and says they, you know, would like to see someone, of course, we would then start the process.
What you mean by move that, start the process?
Yeah, so connecting, um, with school staff, um, so that, you know, we're aware and then connecting with the family.
Those students.
I believe so.
Well, we need to inquire about that a little bit more. Besides appearing on page sixty-five of the ninety-sixth page, Killingly High School Power Garden Guidebook, what other notes do parents have of the availability of mental health services to CHR?
Sure, so, um, actually, it's one of ours, is it? Um, there's a family resource questionnaire that goes out to all, I think I choked on this last night. It goes out to all families at the beginning of the school year. Um, there is a variety of things that, uh, families could check. They need support or help in certain areas, and mental health is one of them. And so, if anyone checked that box, they have, they're connected with CHR. That was really the appropriate support that they needed, but we reached out to all those families.
Can I interrupt here and refer, the witnesses referring to, uh, our proposed exhibit fifteen? It's a family resource center. And, um, I would like to have that admitted.
Any objections?
Well, the, 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 the. Do you please start to, uh, qualify exhibit fifteen?
Yes. Yes.
You have it.
Choice is distributed.
This goes home to all families at the beginning of the school year. Um, this is our beginning of school year forms that parents are required to fill out and send back. This support is not required. If your family feels like they don't need any support here, they may have to fill this out, but it is in that packet.
Uh, how big is that, Emily? Many, many documents?
I could find out. I'm not sure how many documents are in there. I don't dispute that packet.
Wha, what's the Family Resource Center?
Family Resource Center, um, that is, um, run by Emily Ross. She's our Family Resource Center Coordinator. Um, and she's connecting families. She's also our homeless liaison. Um, she connects families with a variety of services, all of which are on here, um, within the town should they need that. She also runs our community store, um, food, you know, she works closely with the food bank, diner bank.
Does she have this little plate?
Yes.
Is this grant funded?
Is what grant funded?
The Family Resource Center.
It's, there is grant funding, yes.
Uh, is it grant funded until it expires soon?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um. And you have any data, uh, on how many of these forms are returned, teacher?
How many? No. I know we did receive many with the mental health, but I don't know how many are returned. I can find that out.
Yeah, we would appreciate that. Now, this one does not specifically mention CHR, maybe, correct?
It does not have that on there, no, the mental health.
Okay, I have no objection to this admission.
Uh, state has no objection.
That's responded fifteen.
Five fifteen is, is, is a full exhibit, okay.
Uh. Now, you pointed out that the Killingly High School Power Garden Guidebook includes a paragraph of CHR at page sixty-five.
Yes.
Uh. Is there such a handbook for the intermediate schools, though?
There is, but it does not have anything on CHR in there.
Why not?
I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think about that and I believe because we had, um, our intermediate principal resigned and there was a time period where we did not have a new principal hired. And I think that was probably around the time that the handbook went out. So, it could have just been during that timeframe where we did not have a sitting principal and it potentially did, assistant principals put out that. I don't know for sure. Yeah, that, that would be, I thought about that myself. I, I think that might have been why.
Okay, now, now, the issue about a mailing to parents about CHR, I'm rather confused about. Kelly Burke testified it was a letter that the board had approved that was ready to go out. And you testified that there was no such letter because CHR invited to get, to do the lack of capacity. Who's writing?
Uh, CHR had asked us not to send out a MAP, um, flyer, if you will.
And there are no plans to announce that, no flyer?
Well, I don't know if there would be plans in the future. Right now, we kind of have to get through the students that are on our reading list and hire another clinician.
And in terms of how big CHR might be?
Mm-hmm.
You have no way of knowing the need unless you send out such a flyer, like that, right?
Yeah, so eventually, I think we probably will, but right now, like in the immediate, if that's what you're asking?
Uh. No immediate plan to send out that, 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 that to parents?
Once we have another clinician, I think we'll be, we'll be able to, um, send more MAP communication out. We have to kind of get that person on board.
I certainly plan to ask students directly about the label if they'd like to access, uh, CHR type mental health services.
I don't know. I don't, not personally, I haven't heard of that.
Okay, uh. We went over this last week, but the date the generations was rejected, until the date CHR contract was signed.
Okay.
Either you or the superintendent ever proposed conducting another survey? I'm sorry. From the date the generations, the generations contract was rejected in March of twenty-twenty-two, until the date the CHR contract was signed, which was from May first of twenty-three, did you or the superintendent ever propose conducting another survey of students to determine the existence of an extensive mental health needs?
Not that I'm aware of.
Uh. Kelly Burke testified that I interfered with CHR contract. Are you in possession of any evidence, whatever, as for that allegation?
Objection, wrong witness to ask. She should be asking Kelly Martin.
I, I did. She didn't have any evidence of that.
Well, that cross-examining this witness, somehow Kelly Martin's found statement.
Objection.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Question, Kelly Martin. Question, Kelly Martin testified that I interfered with CHR contract. Are you in possession of any, any evidence that supports that allegation?
Objection is overruled.
I don't have that.
Uh. Do you agree with me that hiring one additional school counselor, a secondary school, and one additional school counselor, a high school, would cost Killingly the readiness of a hundred and fifty thousand a year?
Uh, a little more than that, probably, but I'd say closer to one sixty, seven to ten thousand.
Okay. And isn't it the case that hiring five, three guards costs more than that, teacher?
Yes.
Okay. And isn't it the case that Killenly has spent hard work, and that about appeased attorney's statements in the fight, and spent more reactions?
Objection, irrelevant.
I don't have that number.
Both are, both, it has to do with the priorities of Killenly's work of education, in terms of, in terms of, of, um, in terms of how they spend the money.
And also, it doesn't have anything to do with, related to the direct examination. This is all, a lot of this has been outside the scope of direct.
So, there's two objections, relevancy and outside the scope of the direct testing.
Yes. Both your objections are overlooked.
Your testimony, which we have no idea how much you spent, uh, thirty seasons, but?
Do I have an accurate number as of today? I'd have to go back and check all of that. Hundred, one.
Yeah, the question was, was it more than a hundred and fifty thousand?
I can find that out, I hate to answer that without being absolutely sure, I like to be very sure of my answers.
That's true. Personally, are you in agreement with the board's decision to spend the school board's money on our security guards and legal fees rather than the mental health services publicly?
Yeah.
Are you firstly in agreement with the board's decision to spend school board money on our security guards and on legal fees rather than mental health services for students?
There's two questions there. Armed security guards, uh, I don't have objection to armed security guards, I think the staff has been appreciative, we have been appreciative of all the work that they have done, um, do I wish we weren't in this? Yeah.
Kelly Martin testified that, uh, Killenley proposed generations to the board, because it was on a regional board with, on a regional board with generations, but isn't it the case that it gently explained to the board the generations was picked because they had a local presence, or he said Killenley students had that experience running the school-based health center or not?
An objection to questions being asked about testimony of others, when this is cross-examination of this witness's testimony.
The question, the question is, does she remember that, that superintendent in Jelly explained his reasons as those three reasons for bringing Killenley, for bringing generations forward?
Objection is overruled.
I do recall him saying that.
And in fact, the Northeast Early Childhood Council has to board, you and other superintendents in the area serve in the same capacity on the Northeast Early Childhood Council that superintendent in Jelly did, correct?
Yes.
What, what's your, what does that involve?
Uh, right now, I, I'm just attending the monthly meeting, usually one school district a month, we'll do a quick presentation on some of the offerings that they have and some of the great things that that means in their school district. That's all, that's as far as I've gone in the committee, maybe the council, whether there might be more involvement there, but that's where I am right now.
That is, who's, who's other council?
Uh, there's Brooklyn Superintendent, Killenley Superintendent, so we have the Putnam and the Plainfield Superintendent, I don't know if they want, Canterbury, I think I'm confusing, um, I'm so sorry if I'm missing somebody else, um, so, we also have, sometimes town people will be on the committee, I've attended one meeting, so I can't be for certain if that's always who's on there, so our early childhood, um, teacher, or sorry, principal, director is on there, Emily Rock, our Family Resource Center Director is there, I'm not sure exactly from the other towns, what capacity the other members from the other towns hold.
Thank you, I never stopped, I have about, I think ten minutes more.
Why don't you finish up and then we can break to them.
Now, you were in a, going way back, you were at board meeting on September eighth of twenty twenty-one, do you remember Mr. in Jelly discussing the creation of a school board, a school-based health center at that meeting?
I haven't, I believe I have that on my, I don't like that.
Okay, uh, he said that they had spoken with two agencies that chose generations because they were already servicing students, he told the board that you, Susan Nash, and Kathy Tony were ready to meet these with generations and were preparing a presentation for the board, um, do you remember that?
Meeting with generations to schedule the presentation to the board, I didn't provide generations' presentation.
No, no, but you were ready to meet these with generations, and prepared the presentation.
Yeah, for the board's presentation, yes.
Okay. Was there any, were there any concerns voiced by the board that way?
When generations presented, you're saying, or?
No, on, on September eighth of two thousand twenty-one.
I don't know, I have to go back and watch.
You were in attendance at board meetings in January, February, late March of twenty twenty-two, do you have any memory of any board member stated at any such meeting that the board was disappointed that the administration had not brought multiple providers to them so that they could pick who they wanted?
I recall the statement being made, I just don't have a good context for when or where that statement was made.
At the meeting of, of March sixteenth, which you just looked at, do you remember Chairwak Jali directed the administration to explore alternatives to a school-based health better, not provide, not provide other providers?
Um, I do remember the first part of that, um, to explore alternatives, I don't know if I should, it leaves all the second part of that.
Okay, um, you had, you attended the April twenty twenty-two meeting with Terry McKean, John Pressally, and Brian Cluckworth.
Okay.
August twenty twenty-two. Is it not the case that John Pressally asked the Killenley representatives if the superintendent were to bring other providers to the board while we were meeting, would the board be open to having a school-based health center, and attorney statements that they would not?
I don't know who said that, I feel like that may have been discussed, I don't recall exact words.
There was testimony regarding the prohibition of district staff communicating with the State Department of Education.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that.
There was test, testimony regarding the prohibition of district staff talking to the State Department of Education.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, could you clarify who, if this witness made any, who you're talking about made statements? Is this related to the direct examination of this witness?
No, I'm asking her experience about this, the statement was made that it was not threatening to district staff, isn't it the case that school staff did feel threatened about this, and then members of the central office staff came to you personally to express their concern about their need to talk to C S D?
Could you clarify what exactly you're talking about, they might, I, I, I'm not understanding.
This is, no prohibition, which is exhibit, of district staff talking to C S D, and your witness Kelly Martin testified that it wasn't threatening to district staff, and I'm asking you, did this, whether that was her experience?
Again, this goes to testimony of another witness, not this witness?
It goes to what she personally experienced while being assistant superintendent and then superintendent of school.
Objection is overruled, you may ask, you may answer.
Okay, I don't know if anyone ever said that they felt threatened, uh, I would say if anyone said anything, it was just frustrated.
Frustrated without, right?
I don't, no one ever said threatened to me.
Dr. Nash, would, were they, did they share some concern of not being eligible to speak with anybody from C S D?
The word I would use would be frustrated, I didn't send concern, just frustrated.
Because they normally would have conversations with C S D and they were prohibited from doing stuff?
Uh, no, they weren't prohibited, it was just an extra step to get permission.
And they didn't have to do that prior?
Right, thank you.
Would you be in agreement with Killenley Board of Education adopting a strong resolution making it clear that the mental health of students is part or parcel of the educational responsibility of the Killenley Board of Education?
I will ask you to repeat that one more time, Kelly.
Would you be in agreement with the Killenley Board of Education adopting a strong resolution making it clear that the mental health of students is part and parcel of the educational responsibility of the Killenley Board of Education?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you be in agreement with expanding the work of C H R or retaining other outside providers, so that the mental health clinic is open, in both the high schools and intermediate school, at least three full days a week, that it advertises its availability to all parents, teachers, and students, makes clear that a student can walk in at any time with treatment subject, either parental consent or statutory exception, and make clear that the Killenley Board of Education will not intrude into the working of the clinic? Would I be agreeable to you?
Yes.
And you are in agreement that there are, kind of, another survey, would you be in agreement to hold in a public forum of the results and permitting any citizen, parent, student, teacher, administrator to speak at such forum?
Yes.
All right, um, so would you be agreeable to you to work with the State Department of Education to assess the mental health needs of Killenley College Schools, to determine whether further positions or services might be needed, and agree to work to create such positions?
I believe you are doing that through the, um, behavioral health pilot, yes.
Thank you very much.
I have one.
Really quickly, I, I just want to go back to, because I, I asked you this in our last hearing, about the guards or the presence of armed guards, and I think it was five, five budded, I don't know if it's five in place, I, I don't know, there's not five, I think there's, you have, you have, it's three, 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 yeah, and, and I asked you, what have you said the staff were happy about, the presence of, is the staff happy about the guards because they are present, or are they happy about the guards that they are present and armed?
I don't know, I didn't ask that question, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to break for lunch and return. Oh, attorney, do you have any direction when we connect?
Yes.
When do we want to return, at one o'clock?
Something to find a mix.
Okay, we'll return at one o'clock. Okay, we'll return at one o'clock.
Yeah.
Enthusiastic and happy to see us all.
We're going to turn on the other side of the light, say, "What's your date?" Bye.
He told me when I was on, like, he gets that from you off of it. He's broken, I know.
You got it, you got it. You gotta tell Eric.
My never did.
Eric has a solution.
That's true. He gets up and hits that thing and she goes up, but never mind, never been at the board meeting though, I was like this, I could barely see over.
No, I was, every time I'm on. She got it, so the look, the back. So, just stand up a little bit.
Yeah, that's the thing, she's got the house, but she's.
Okay. Right now.
No, we have.
Not done. Yeah. Oh, I had a little tension there.
Yeah.
If it was driving, I'd be like, "What?"
They were trying to correct my chair, but you did, if you were firm enough, like, Karen, like, Karen was like up here, I was like, I couldn't move my chair, so, I knew that most looked, so.
Okay.
Whatever, the chair normally is, they're really tall, but I could barely see over my man before I did.
Karen, I offered you a replacement.
I know, but I felt funny, because everybody else was in shorts, shirts, and chairs.
So, what are we doing? Are we waiting for?
Attorney Stevens.
Oh, right.
There's a witness. Witness here.
Oh, yes, she's there.
It's a work you have to do.
Yeah, but I know you didn't know that about me, it's not really worked.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
I'm going to take my way back.
Well, I know. It's a beachhead. The whole, I'm checking that our new board members try. I just like, and they, they write literally a text, so. We're done, turning, we turned email, um, attorney, I do, I don't like that. And, nevermind, right, right. So, we got a little boy, I want to come in and come down. Well, my kids, they like, we sleep in the house, we, you know, I go, we actually we should have. And they use our jumper. But, oh, yeah, whatever you did start, oh, I can't remember.
No. I like that. And then right before that, strawberry.
Actually, I wear my other one.
That was a bad.
I have a fisher. He's very tolerant. He's very tolerant.
I had a.
He's like two years old.
I have, I have, I have.
Imagine how young he is. Those guys. That's not good. I think he's a little kid. I'm sure he is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you can only try. It's not going to be any worse than we did. True. You'd be on the news at six.
Apparently, I never watch.
Get all my news online. Really. Hasn't been that long for me, but at least, yeah, over a year. Yeah. Yeah. I was arguing, well, discussing online, my case. Assuming that the media is reporting it accurately, I agree with you. What do you mean, what do you mean? What do I agree with? They tend to exaggerate, leave things out, make things up. That's why. Forget, you know, minor details. Yeah.
Okay, welcome back, and we will get started on Attorney Stevens' exhibit, that we gave some time with Dr. Nash.
Yes, but before we do that, I have some questions about the exhibits that maybe could be resolved. There were some questions asking about exhibits from last time, and one was a copy of the KHF High School handbook, we do have copies, and if there's an agreement, you know, we'd like to have them admitted, since we're questioning on it anyway.
No objection to this date. This is the ninety-six page full tape of the high school.
Right, right.
I'd be glad to have that, and also be glad to have the intriguing full tape of it.
Right, we don't have that today, but we do have the high school handbook, which I think is important. Also, we have.
How many exhibit numbers, leave my phone on for it now, right?
That would be, that would be probably eighty-one on our end for those two, it is eighty-one.
And will you ensure that the court has a copy?
Yes, we have four copies, I believe, so.
Electronic, I think she would.
Oh, okay, we can do that, no problem.
So, it's eighty-one, okay, so, the respondent eighty-one is.
Okay, and then we have the Family Resource Center questionnaire, I'm not sure whether that was already admitted or not, and I don't know the number of that one, but it was discussed.
Is that exhibit fifty?
I believe, so, yes. That was exhibit, isn't that what it was?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I know, we actually never went in. I, I asked a lot of that, it's, yes, I have access to.
Then there were, you asked for two charts to be, have, be printed out again, so they're easily read, we have those as well, we can provide them to you. And then there's one, I did, okay, before I get to that one, all of the other exhibits that we had that were minutes of the Killington Board of Ed, and I believe they would be on our additional, let me go through the.
Is that exhibit twenty-three of yours?
I'm sorry, your Vener twenty-three.
Your Vener twenty-three, Hovers responded fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-four, sixty-nine, and seventy-one.
Okay, so we have, I believe that's right, fifty-seven. Let me just make sure, do we have any others? There was one other, seventy-one, August seventeenth, twenty-two, that's, that may be due to.
That is, by the way, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so those are all admitted, I just wanted to make sure about that, and then the other one that I have is, it said, it was discussed, not provided beforehand, but I would like to have it admitted, and it's, and that would be their student climate survey that was discussed and on cross-examination. Does anyone have an objection to that survey?
What is it, where is it?
I think that was your number twenty, wasn't it? Didn't you just put it in?
Well, I put in the whole survey.
No, that is, this is a different survey, it would show. Sure, Dr. Nash will have freedom of error. You can give them, give them each a copy.
Thank you.
And you. And give one to the court reporter as well.
Not this, we're going to be testimony as to who was given to number responses, that's what are.
So, it can't come in?
It can't really, but you, yeah, you said late, I'll issue it.
Well, you, you had asked about the school climate survey, you had questions about this witness of the school climate survey at one point.
All right, so, we'll, we'll just, he wants, he wants, wait a minute, take it up, would you want me?
Okay. I have another question also about our proposed number nineteen, does that have anything to do with the resource officers, there was questioning about that, do you have an objection to that exhibit coming in?
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Thank you. Yeah, I have no objection, thank you. I have no objection to the testimony of the word, I can say the last word.
So, respondent nineteen is admitted.
And, and we, I just want to check on this one, respondent exhibit fifty-three, that was the April twentieth statement to Superintendent regarding, from the state regarding shortage areas, I mean, no, we had discussion on that, was that admitted or not?
We still have fifty-three.
I thought that was admitted, I didn't, well.
Okay, that's what I, I want to check on this.
So, if it wasn't, does anybody have an objection to the?
There's a three now, no objection.
So, either way, thank you.
I think that's all the preliminary things that I had.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Nash is still under oath, okay, so may we proceed?
Yes, she may proceed.
Hopefully, she's watching.
I mean.
Hopefully, she's standing by as well, because she's under oath.
I think after you stop, put the microphone as close as possible, I'll try to hear you.
I'll, I'll try.
Is the light on?
It is on, it's red.
It is.
Okay, Dr. Nash, you were asked a great many questions, so I'm going to try to go through, refresh your memory about some of them, okay? Let's see. I guess, you were asked questions about the mental health director position, for example, do you, are you aware of any other schools in the state of Connecticut have a mental health director?
I object to false speculation, no foundation has been established that would show us that this witness is familiar with these working involved.
I asked her if she was aware of any, not all.
I'm sorry, my bad, objections overruled.
You can answer the question. Oh, no, it's off again. Sorry, you can answer the question.
So, I haven't looked at every school district, but I have heard that there, there's, I found one, the Nautica, I don't know of any of them.
You don't know any, any others, would you be familiar with some in the area, if there were any in the area?
Yes, since the districts that we are close to, from my superintendent's group, none of those.
And what made Killington decide to have a mental health director?
Well, kind of like I said, had said before, we realized that we had mental health needs, we wanted to bring cohesion across all of our counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and also really partner with our outside community agencies, having someone kind of bring that coherence, in a kind of bird's eye view, being able to theme together, all the great programs that we have in a, in a more effective manner, was really why we moved forward in that direction.
And, Dr. Nash, before you had the health director, who did all these, those that you put, put, who did they report to?
I missed the first part, who did all the?
All these, like, you talked about social workers, psychologists, counselors, they must have reported, some of them were seen, and who did they report to?
Perfect, so, K through eight would really just be the building council, that there was individuals we're report to, at the high school, you have a director of counseling, kind of oversaw, but no in district wise, that really had that position, I would say that people services directors oftentimes do that, but they are heavily, you know, they are involved in a lot, so.
So, it would be people personnel that they have done prior to that?
Yeah, but just.
So, it would be people personnel, that's, like, you did have that.
Yeah, absolutely, but just solely on, sorry, just solely on mental health workers, we didn't have anyone that was solely doing that, so, people services, you know, examples.
Okay. And how, how many, how has that gone, can you describe what has been implemented under the health director, mental health director?
Absolutely, so, you know, part of that work, a large part of that work is going through the steps of the Behavior Health Pilot, which is really, you know, audit of your mental health support capacity, if you will, within your district, and so, there, we had a formed committee, a district-wide committee, that Kathy Cody led, to start to go through the assessment that comes along with the Behavior Health Pilot, it looked at a variety of pieces to mental health across the district, and, so then, the part, you know, one part of that is community mapping, that is reaching out to all of the community agencies and programs that we have available in our area, and starting to make those connections, and certainly, we've worked with those agencies before, but really, you know, kind of bolstering the connections, so, we were able to partner with the United Services, they offer a wide variety of programming for students of all ages, also for families, so that was, that was kind of the initial work, and then we moved into, before getting CHR, that was a large part of that work, and then kind of bringing that, like I said before, that cohesion of counseling, and meeting with counselors on a regular basis, really understanding the needs of the counselors, you know, what is our philosophy around counseling students, so that, you know, that has been, in a really short nutshell, the work, and the work is pretty extensive, but that would be the work in a nutshell.
Okay, and the, what, if any, communication occurs with the CSDE with regard to the Behavior Health Pilot program?
Sure, so, there are, we have monthly meetings with the, I believe, Kim Traverso, she is, you know, with the state, as well as the BHDI, I believe I'm saying that right, Child Health Development Institute, members that are on our Behavior Health Pilot team.
And what does that team do, what does it consist of, and what, what do you do?
Sure, so I am not part of that team, but the team works on looking at the assessment and the areas that perhaps we need to look at further, and bolster what areas we're doing well in, so that's really the initial work right now.
And could you explain a little bit more about the assessment, is that assessment just of the program, or is the assessment also include assessment of student needs?
I think Cody would be a much better person to answer the granularity of the assessment, but as I know from kind of a bird's eye view, it is more of a comprehensive audit of the mental health services that you provide, staff included, in your entire district, and then also outside work.
And would the assessment of, of the staff that you have, or mental health workers, would that necessarily be connected to the needs that you have determined the district has?
Yeah, one more.
Okay, so, if you, if you have programs in effect, and you have staffing on board, you somehow must have connected how many staffs you need, how many programs you need in some manner, can you give us some of that background of, of how you calculate the needs that you have for staffing and for those programs?
So, in turn, I saw a ratio of students to mental health workers, is that how you mean?
That's one aspect, yeah.
Okay, so, if you're looking at mental health workers across the district, I think I mentioned it last time, with one to one eighty, at the high school is low, if even, the ratio is even better, so we have more counselors at the high schools, it's about one to one eighty-nine.
And, and so, is, that's, the counselors also are, how you hire counselors are based on the needs that you perceive, or they are for the students, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that, that ratio, I think we did talk about that, and looking for the, we had two exhibits, I believe, with regard to that?
Yes.
And I'm looking for their numbers right now, can't seem to find them. I seem to find them. Okay, was that the, what were the titles of those, do you recall?
I'll find it when I come up.
I believe you're looking at twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
I'm missing that page, so thank you.
Right, twenty, twenty-nine.
Yes, school, the student to school counselor ratio, the student ratio chart.
Yes.
Those were not admitted before, is that correct?
Twenty-eight wasn't, they had that, I believe twenty-nine was.
Okay, so can we, can we look at twenty-nine then and see if you could explain what, if you recognize that?
Sure. This is a ratio of mental health workers that you can work it out by different schools within the killing public school system and then kind of just your look.
Okay, and is that what you're talking about that would be considered with regard to the programming that you just described?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like the twenty-nine admitted.
Any objections?
Not from the state.
Okay, if it's twenty-nine without objection, is admitted as opposed to?
And twenty-eight was also admitted previously?
Previously, yes.
Thank you. So in any of these programs, the behavioral health pilot program that you just described, have you ever been precluded from communicating with the state about that?
No, we had kind of a understanding that we would have to communicate with the state on a regular basis.
And is that something that you would want to do?
Yes.
Okay, and you have been able to do it?
Yes.
Okay, and how well has that been going?
Fine.
Okay, so in the title, it's a partnership, does that partnership mean with the state?
Yes, and the BHDI.
Okay, so there has been no resistance to that, in fact, that program has been doing well in Killenly, correct?
Yes, very beneficial.
Okay, and how beneficial, describe some of the benefits of the test.
Sure, so we've been able to really bolster, like I mentioned before, our community partners, we have mentorship with TEES, we have a social group for kids twice a week in Lakefield that we are providing funding to, so students can learn, you know, attend a social playthrough for middle school kids, some are like, but a social field group. We have partnered for, with the Sky Program, with a free mental health assessment program. So over, I can't figure out, but there's many different programs that we've been able to partner with. And it's, in addition to the school-based health center, CHR also offers a variety of things like ICAS in the home or care coordination, so all those things we've been able to really affect it more effectively, you know, if you could say that.
Okay, you mentioned CHR. Does CHR have a facility other than the school-based health care center in Killenly?
Yes.
Okay, is Killenly, some people have described Killenly in the past as being a mental health desert. Would you agree with that?
For mental health, no, it's more so with like primary care physicians.
Okay, and could you describe the mental health opportunities there are in Killenly?
Yeah, I probably will miss some, but we have CHR and we have Silver Lining, we have Dacnol Behavioral Health, which is right down the road, Generations, right down the road, United Services, I am sure I'm off, I'm missing a couple, but that's.
And in the past, before you voted on the school-based health center, CHR, has your staff referred students to those facilities when needed?
I don't know about referred, but definitely suggested to family that these are out there and it might be a good partnership for them to look into for their.
And do you know whether parents have undertaken that opportunity in the past?
Yes, we have students that are seen, serviced by some of those agencies I just mentioned.
Now, you mentioned, you were asked about staffing as well, and some people have been testifying, I guess, whether it's you or Kelly or whoever, that it's a snapshot each time you look at the staffing, could you explain about that?
Yes, staffing is fluid, you may have someone resign, you have occasionally vacant for a couple weeks, but then you have, you have a new hire, and that can kind of ebb and flow throughout the full year.
So under attorney files, I was asking you about the staffing compared to years prior, what would you say about that in terms of snapshots?
So you could take a snapshot on a day where we do have a lot of vacancies in four weeks' time, so the vacancies are all filled and it looks a lot better, so it depends on what snapshot you're looking at.
And have, at any point in time, does that picture of staffing mean that you are, you know, the district is not meeting the needs of students?
Do you have one more? I'm sorry.
Does the fact that at any point in time, you know, turnover necessarily mean that the students' needs are not being met?
We will always work with the resources and the staff that we have, whether that means, you know, people doubling up or, you know, redefining a role, working to get an agency in, a long-term substitute, you know, whatever we have to do to fill the position, we will do.
And have you done so in the past?
We've done all we've got.
Okay, and that, regardless of whether you have a school-based health center, that's true?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, could you explain how the staff knows whether a student has mental health needs?
So I would say that as an educator, you just simply know what to look for, but we do have like an FDL block, if you will, a prior period where, you know, we are, staff has engaged students in like a non-academic conversation, talking about kind of where they are in terms of their mood leader, which is part of the ruler program, is what it sounds like, right? It's a mood leader, where are you on the mood? So, you know, through our ruler program, we've been able to identify where students are at.
And when was that ruler program implemented?
Sure, so it's that staggered approach prior to me arriving in Killenly, was already established at KMS, KIS, it was established with students, two-year rollout, staff first and students. Last school year, this current school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, we have established it at the high school with students.
So this was started before the VODA generation?
Yes, yes.
Tell us also about Rachel's Challenge, there are questions about that. What is the purpose of Rachel's Challenge?
Right, so Rachel's Challenge was really about, you know, looking for signs, well, really it's about, we look at it two different ways, I guess, but it's about noticing signs, you know, are there things that you notice that might have, be off about people, are there individuals in your school talking about students now that might be isolated and, and then, so it's kind of like knowing signs, but then there's another side of it, it's all about, you know, what do you do when you see that, you know, kindness and compassion and humanity and trying to bolster that in students.
And the video that was shown to the students, could you describe the content of that?
Sure, I don't know if I remember all of it, but there were some clips from Columbine, some of the nine-one-one calls. It also shared, so it's about a student who passed away in Columbine, and she had a series of journals centered around kindness and looking out for people, particularly those that might be unnoticed and maybe struggling and others are not noticing. And so it kind of talks through, almost like through her eyes, through some of her journals.
And the point was to teach the students what about that?
To really teach that we all have, that we all have struggles, right? But that we all have compassion inside of us to help others that are also struggling. So yes, we may have our own struggles, but to be on the lookout for the student that might sit alone at lunch, to be on the lookout who's not playing with anyone at recess, and to be that bigger person and reach out and maybe ask them to play a game, let's sit down and ask them what you want for lunch.
And so was there only one kind of reaction among the students out of trauma seeing this?
No.
What kind of reactions do you recall the students had?
Like I said, I was at Killenly Intermediate School, for the seventh and eighth grade, I should say there are different versions of this, right, because it goes all the way down to elementary school. So when it's elementary school, we're not watching clips from Columbine shooting, right? It's much more kid-friendly, but in the seventh and eighth grade, when I was there, I, I didn't notice really a response at all, like one way or the other, students kind of sat and watched, they took it seriously.
Have you had any feedback about whether it was effective in helping students?
So part of the next step for Rachel's Challenge is that you form a club called Friends of Rachel, and it's about promoting kindness. And so we already had a similar club in both of our high schools and intermediate schools, so they work on things to promote kindness, so probably just give you an example, it's not somebody. So for standing up promise, do something, say something, eighth graders will decorate the fifth graders' lockers with positive statements when they first come into the building in September, just saying, look, you know, you're welcome here, you always have an eighth grader that's going to look out for you. So that club would organize something like that.
And has it, has it been beneficial?
I think it's always beneficial.
And that is likely to continue?
Yes.
Those clubs?
Yes.
And is there a, you mentioned it starts out, is there another level that Rachel Challenge continues?
It's really up to the students, right? So it's up to the students if they, they drive with their club initiative will be. So if they want to do another initiative or another program, that would be up to the students and it would, you know, of course, their advisory now to get that rolling.
Okay. Getting back to the services you provide in the school, with regard to the services provided by outside providers or by CHR in the school, can you describe a little bit more about what the job of your social workers and your counselors are in terms of the kinds of therapeutic provisions they have?
Sure, and it could range, but yeah, really, but counselors could be meeting with students on a schedule or college application, they also could be meeting with students who, you know, just had a really bad breakup with a girlfriend or boyfriend, cannot seem to make it through that math class, or they're struggling with that math class and they don't know how to ask the teacher for help. There's so many, I mean, that's kind of the beauty of education is that every day offers something different and you really never know what's going to come into your office. But it could, it could range from anything, everything I just said is all in between.
So the social workers and the counselors could conceivably hear about the emotional feelings of a student after a breakup, as you suggest, correct?
Of course, yes.
So that goes to the mental health needs, correct?
Yes, yes.
Are the both the social workers and the counselors trained in any way in dealing with those kind of mental health needs?
Yes, their training would touch upon that, of course, yeah.
And if they couldn't provide the kind of therapeutic treatment that that particular student needed in terms of their licensing or whatever, what would those social workers and counselors do?
Yes, it depends what the need is, if it's, you know, if it's very serious, maybe two-one-one or nine-one-one might have to be called, if it's something where we need to, you know, have meeting with the family, we would arrange that to happen, it really depends on what needs.
Would they ever refer to CHR or to outside providers?
Yes, and usually, you know, we would want to have families can y'all deny, yeah.
And is that the purpose of having the connections with the United Services and these other organizations?
Oh, so that we have options to offer, yes, right.
And there are, there are many of them that you have options to refer or suggest to parents to seek for help?
Yeah, there's a lot of programming out there, really, any program, your child is struggling with substance abuse or dating, younger kids, you know, dealing with social anxiety, there's, there's usually a program where I can attend.
So you had connections before the VODA generations and CHR, and you have more now, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we have more and our connections have been bolstered and are more organized, if you will.
And so your social workers and counselors were providing the same kind of treatments and therapies that they are now, it's just you have additional resources, especially social workers and counselors need them for a particular student, is that correct?
Yes.
So I don't want to repeat myself, but I've had a bad memory, so I think I asked you before if you know of any, I think there were, that the question was, any mental health directors across the state, do you know of any other schools that have school-based health centers across the state?
Yes.
Are there any that do not have school-based health centers?
Yes.
And are you aware of how they provide the mental health needs of their students?
I do not know, assuming it's their in-house staff.
Staff being?
Counselors, social workers.
Okay, are you aware of any of those schools that do not have school-based health centers being reported to the state on a ten-floor weekend plane?
No.
Now, regarding generations, you talked about the presentation that generations gave back in two thousand and two. Do you, can you explain a little bit more about how that presentation came about, or the suggestion of generations in the first place?
Sure, was that the board presentation or the public?
I guess we'll go back to the beginning of when superintendent former boss, Superintendent Angelie, suggested it to the board.
Yes, so I believe September of twenty-twenty-one, a board meeting, it was mentioned that generations would be coming in to do presentations. I can't remember the exact day of the presentation.
But that first, that first time that he mentioned it to the board, do you recall how he presented that?
I think it may have been in superintendent's update, I don't remember the exact words.
Dr. Nash, did you present to the board or did superintendent Angelie present to the board?
That generations would be coming to make a presentation.
Right, this presentation that you're currently talking about.
Yes, so in September of twenty-twenty-one, superintendent Angelie mentioned, I don't remember the exact words, that there would be a presentation from generations.
Did he say that at that time, do you recall, if there were any other entities that would be considered or presenting also in addition to generations?
I do not recall that.
Okay, so the only one you recall he mentioned was generation?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and then after September, going into the spring, how did it come about that Generations gave the proposal? Or, I'm sorry, the presentation?
Oh, okay. How did it come about? I am assuming, and I was the superintendent at that time, that Superintendent Angelie put it on the agenda? I don't know how that made it on the agenda.
Okay. Stephen, that's probably why I was asking that question, in fairness to Dr. Nash, who wasn't superintendent, and we've heard this testimony a lot about the presentation. I don't know what you're trying to get to, if it was really Superintendent Angelie that was making the presentation, since he was superintendent at the time, Dr. Nash was assistant superintendent.
Correct, but there was testimony about how, what was presented in that presentation that Dr. Nash was part of.
Because she's, you know, but she had nothing to do with presenting to the board.
Right, but she is aware of the procedure, there was questions about the procedure for whether the board approved applications and proposals before they went to the board or after. So that's what I'm leading into. So when you explained for, excuse me, for instance, the policy was different at that time, whether the board, excuse me, had to approve something before it was applied for.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Well, this, it's my understanding that Dr. Angelie had applied for some funding for a school-based health center before the suggestion or the presentation was made to the board by Generations, am I correct?
Yes, it was in, mentioned in both S R two and H R three.
And at that time, did Dr. Angelie have to go before the board before applying for that?
No.
Didn't he go before the board before applying for that grant?
That was before my time, but I don't think so.
Okay, so after, well, let me just ask it this way. After a time, was there a change in the board policy with regard to whether suggestions or presentations or applications for grants had to go before the board, before they were applying for?
Yes, I think that was September of 2022.
Okay.
Just for grants, though.
Just for grants?
Yes.
Application?
For grants, yes.
So it's not that a superintendent can apply, and then after applying and being given grant approval, and go by the state, go to the board, and then after approval of the grant, that it was already either in the process or approved, is that correct?
Yeah, okay, I'm not sure.
So there was, I'm just trying to distinguish the policy. So at one point, to your knowledge, was the process for a superintendent to be able to apply for a grant and either get preliminary or approval, or at least have that in the process, before that superintendent had to gain approval by the board for even applying for that?
Okay, I think I understand. So after September 2022, we, as a school, would present a proposal, you know, we would apply for, if a grant came up, we would apply for it, and we would present a proposal to the board.
Before the application was submitted?
That's right, yes.
Okay, and that represented a change of policy?
Yes, some, there are some grants you have to get board approval before you submit, that's part of the grant.
But isn't it true that Dr. Angelie applied for the grant that included his recommendation? Why he needed the grant was to establish the school-based health center, but he applied for that before he got approval from the board, is that correct?
Yes.
But that wouldn't happen under the current policy of the board, correct?
Yes, right.
He'd have to get approval before he applied for the grant, and to explain to the board why he wanted that particular grant.
Right.
Okay.
Attorney Stevens can ask a question. Was that a grant, within the grant language of that grant, was it stipulated that the superintendent had to get board approval, or wasn't? Okay, thank you, thank you.
So in the spring, when this presentation was made, again, there was only Generations suggested, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that grant was, that, not grant, excuse me, that proposal, after the presentation was made and the testimony by the public, the board simply took a vote and rejected it for the reasons you described earlier, correct?
Yes.
Do you know, let me ask you this, as superintendent, either the one before you were now, does a superintendent become aware of certain laws regarding education as part of your job?
Yes.
Okay, and how do you get informed about that?
Oh, variety of ways. We get key updates, and usually, shipment will put out a brief on all the legislation that's either upcoming or that's been passed.
CAE being what?
The Policy Organization.
Connecticut Association of Lords of Education? Okay, is that your primary source of information with regard to what the law is, would you say?
Yes.
And so are you aware that there is no law that requires any school district to adopt a school-based health center?
Right.
So are you aware that any school board can reject a school-based health center for whatever reason?
Right.
And again, you testified that there are other schools, school districts you're aware of, that have not adopted school-based health centers, correct?
Right.
And they have not been the subject of a 10th floor beacon point, correct?
Right.
Let me ask you this, there was a special meeting that occurred that you testified about, and there was questions, or questions to you about whether the public was cut off from testifying or making comment at that special meeting, do you remember that?
Yes.
Were you at that special meeting?
I believe I was.
Okay. Do you know, are you familiar with board policies?
Yes.
Do you know whether it was a board policy at a special meeting to entertain public comment only on the topic on the agenda?
For a special meeting? There is language, but I don't know if it goes down to that level of a special meeting. I'd have to go back and look at it.
What language are you thinking of?
I think it does have to be, public comment does have to be related to the agenda, but I'd have to go back and reread that to be exact.
Do you recall at that special meeting that we're talking about, where Generations was, tried to be discussed by the public, was Generations on the agenda for that meeting?
Not the March, I thought it was March 16th, that meeting?
I vote? No, no, this is a special meeting after that, I believe.
What was the date?
I don't have the date of that, that particular one. Must have been April of 2022.
Sometime in April of 2022, after the vote.
Okay, ask the other question one more time.
Do you recall at that special meeting?
Yes.
Whether Generations, topic of Generations was on that particular agenda?
Got it, okay. I do not think so. I do not think it was on after, after the March 16th, I don't think so.
Okay, and do you recall whether the public still wanted to talk to the board event during public comment about Generations, even though it was not on the agenda?
I don't know if it was, I don't know about Generations specifically, or a school-based health center, I'm not sure.
Okay, but to your memory, it was a possibility that that was not the topic on the agenda?
Yes.
And the public attempted to speak to topics not on the agenda?
I believe so.
Okay, and in that context, assuming your memory is accurate, okay, in that context, do you recall the board chair telling the public that they could not, no longer comment at that time on that topic, that it was not on the agenda?
I am not 100% sure. I feel like I've heard that, but sometimes you could, did I hear it directly or did I hear it indirectly? I may have heard that.
Do you recall at any time that you attended any of these board meetings, that the board just said, we won't entertain comment?
Any comment? No.
Do you recall whether there were limitations placed on comment at any particular meeting?
Time limits, you mean?
Time limits, or you were?
Yeah, there were usually different time limits. You'd read a statement before the board meeting, you'd usually give people about three minutes or so.
And was there any time that you were at a meeting where the board chair had to tell someone from the public to sit down?
So usually they give a warning at the three-minute mark, it's getting close, and they won't, you'll have to say, sit down.
Okay, and is that, did they keep talking? What happened to that?
I don't know. Usually they jumped it down.
So when they took that vote, just to reiterate, I guess, Generations, were there other proposals considered for other school-based health centers after that time?
After, yes, so the ADHOP committee was created September 2022, and after that, three different school-based health centers came and presented that.
And between March of 2022 and September of 2022, was there anything being considered about how to help students in terms of their mental health needs?
Sure, I mean, like I had mentioned before, we have always been, you know, working internally within our buildings to try to better meet the needs of our students. So, you know, organizing F D L blocks for high schools and intermediate schools, usually it's very common in elementary schools, you don't always have that in intermediate and high schools, continuing to implement the R U R A program. During that time, I believe that's when the board voted on Rachel's Challenge, if I'm correct, and we don't usually meet during the summer, though.
And was that about that period of time where the security, armed security guards were adopted?
Yes, yes.
So there were discussions about mental health and needs of students, and interventions were still being utilized, is that correct, between March and September 2022?
Yes.
Okay, and then in September of 2022, you said the ADHOP committee was voted on?
Yes.
And after that, what happened with regard to trying to meet the needs of the students other than with Generations?
In particular, with the ADHOP committee you're talking about? So first meeting was the 30th of November, and at that meeting, C H C, school-based health centers came in and presented, and then we kind of worked through, the ADHOP committee had liked that group, we were working through, giving a contract in place, unfortunately that fell through, and after the contract with C H C fell through, there was another meeting in February 2023, and Silver Linings and CHR came in to present that.
Okay, and ultimately, that's when CHR thereafter was voted approved, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and getting back to the SERAC survey, yeah, I believe you testified earlier that Killenly, in conjunction with SERAC, did that survey, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so how does that work? SERAC doesn't just come in and say, we're going to survey your students, right? Was it partly Killenly's idea to find out more about the needs of the students?
So the Substance Abuse Coalition, which is part of United Services, had been established the previous summer, the summer of 2021, and, again, best of my knowledge, United Services, the coalition had met with, I'm assuming leadership at that time, superintendent at that time, and said, you know, this is a survey that we give to all the schools that we partner with, to help us understand the needs of the schools, so that we can provide targeted services through United Services, based on the results of that survey.
So this was something Killenly didn't say, go away, we don't want to know the needs, you jumped at that opportunity, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and why did you do that?
So I think we always want to know more about our students, we always want to understand their needs better, so we can better tailor our services.
And there was some testimony about 20 or 20 some odd percent, as a result of that survey, were in serious need or suicidality or whatever, could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure, it was, there was one, so because it is the Substance Abuse Coalition that provides this survey to public schools across the state of Connecticut, the lion's share of the questions are around substance abuse, so how many times have you experimented with certain kinds of drugs or alcohol, because you have access to alcohol, drug, tobacco, there is one question on it that speaks to students' mental health, and it's broken out into, you know, have you felt, I'm going to paraphrase here, like down or depressed for two weeks or more, then kind of going on a continuum down to a much more severe question where it says that you had thought of creating a suicide plan, a career, carrying a suicide, I mean, a paraphrasing, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, and what were the results of that survey with regard to that mental health piece for Killenly?
So 14.7% of students, grade seven through 12, had answered yes, that they had considered of a suicide plan.
Okay, 14% of how many?
I believe it was 711 students in that survey.
Okay, and roughly how many students were in that, that considered, out of that 100?
So we're going to have to use the math on that for me.
Just want to give you a shot. But it certainly was not, was it 17 to 14%?
It was about 90, is that about 90?
In any case, it was not out of 2,000 that took the survey?
No, not all students took the survey, right?
Okay, okay, so now, when you got those results, what, if anything, did you do with those results in terms of providing services to kids?
Yeah, so that was back in, I think, December of 2021, and we were, that is when we had to rethink how to kind of manage counseling, we had a lot of kids going down to counseling, rethink how we can manage our time down there, using kind of using kind of that, I think it was maybe more of like a triage form. So we met, we were sure that we were meeting the students with the highest needs as quick as we possibly could. So that was, you know, just with counseling. Also, we were, like I said, implementing Ruler at Killenley Intermediate School, training staff at Killenley High School. We were, you know, putting intervention, sorry, FBL block in place for those schools. So, you know, a lot of things within the building that we were trying to do to meet the needs of students.
So you didn't just take that survey and say, oh, well, never mind, put it on a shelf, correct?
No, absolutely not. And really, you know, what the Substance Abuse Coalition does with those surveys is all, really the intent is, it's an anonymous survey, it's for them to provide programming. So they have worked with us, we worked, we worked pretty closely with them to offer programs such as, like, begging, you know, to offer programming around begging. That came out also high on that survey, too. So not, you know, not just that particular one question, but the entirety of the survey so that United Services can offer programming targeted.
And was that survey, the CERAC survey, done in other schools?
Yes, it's done across the state and there are different regions. We're in region three.
Okay, and how did the other schools fare in region three compared to Killenley with regard to the mental health piece?
Sure, so in region three, there are eight school districts. And for that particular question about having a suicide plan, I believe it came out yes. 12.1%, and I think that accounted for about a little over 7,000 students.
Okay, and do you know what the other school districts did in terms of providing treatment after that survey came out in region three?
No.
Do you know any other school districts in region three that have a school-based health center?
We do, and two of the other school, school districts do.
Okay, and have you heard of any other school district in region three that have been reported to the state as far as not meeting the educational needs of the students based on that survey?
No.
And you mentioned also that there was another survey, climate survey?
Yes.
Okay, could you tell us what about that climate survey and when, how long that has been implemented?
Sure.
Dr. Nash, real quickly.
Absolutely.
Did the Killenley Board of Education hold a special meeting given the results of the CERAC survey?
Special Board of Education meeting? No.
May I follow up on that? May I?
Yes, absolutely.
Did, did the Board of, Killenley Board of Education discuss the results of that CERAC survey at any particular board meetings, not necessarily a special meeting?
I, I believe it hasn't come up. I don't know the date. It was discussed at the, the public presentation, I know that.
Okay, and did they, were they aware? Dr. Stevens, Dr. Stevens said, Dr. Nash, was it an agenda item on any board meeting that you recall that the CERAC, the survey was actually an agenda item?
An agenda item? I do not recall that as an agenda item.
Yeah, there was a lot of public participation about the survey.
Yeah.
My rationale for asking about the special meeting was if, in fact, parents or whomever weren't supposed to talk about that because it wasn't on the agenda for the special meeting, I was just wondering if, in fact, it was a special meeting created to have that conversation about the CERAC survey.
No, really not a special meeting.
Was, do you recall that meeting where the public was discussing the CERAC and the board were discussing the CERAC survey? Was that a, do you recall whether that was a special or a regular meeting?
It came up in multiple meetings, regular.
So it was discussing regular, more than one regular Board of Ed meetings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and at those Board of Ed meetings, were there also discussions about what else to do for the, to meet the needs of the students?
Yes.
Were alternatives discussed at those Board of Ed meetings?
Yes.
Okay, and were, in the meantime, before CHC or CHR came into being at Killenley, were alternatives put into place in the meantime? Alternative programming at any time?
Creating, like, alternatives to the school-based health center?
Well, any mental health needs programs, for example, after the CERAC survey came out. You mentioned Rachel's Challenge, for example.
That, yes, that was after that. Ruler, to some extent, depending on what school you're thinking about, is after that. Reorganizing our schedule was after that.
Hiring a mental health director?
Yes, that was after that. School psychologists was after that.
Increasing staffing?
Yes.
So all of that came about at Board of Education meetings and approved by the Board of Ed following the CERAC survey?
Dr. Stevens, that's fine here, or I think it's what?
I, I just want to ask a question. She said, yes.
Could be more easier. Did that check into meeting? Why, yes.
Could sustain that objection, if Dr. Stevens, if you could ask the questions in a non-ladying way. Dr. Nash, at the Board of Education meeting subsequent to rejection of the vote on generation, what in the way of alternative programming was discussed?
There was discussion of Rachel's Challenge. I think we had even discussed peer counseling at one point, I recall that. Of course, our school psychologist position, that was part of the budget process. Now, director of mental health, approved. Those all happened after that.
And they were all approved by the board?
Yes.
And they were implemented by the district?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I hope that answers some of the questions.
Yes, thank you.
I'll go on to the climate survey then.
Sure.
Could you explain for us about what the climate survey is and how that is implemented?
Sure, thanks. The past two years, we have given climate surveys with the same questions on it. We give this survey to students, grades three through 12. Approximately 1,100 students take it every year. And we also provide a survey for staff and for families. And what I provided here, this is an exhibit, in this exhibit, okay. And this exhibit are the results from last November to this November. We give the climate survey twice, November and May. And you can see the difference in, with regard to some of the questions. I think I had made mention of this last time during my testimony that we're happy to see the numbers growing, or I should say, the percentages growing favorably for the questions that would be related to mental health, like on the first page, I feel connected to that.
Dr. Nash, it's not an exhibit yet, so I didn't, it took, I didn't counsel its time to.
I thought it was.
I thought, I thought it was turning, by speaking.
Oh, that's correct. You're right.
So I think, turning, Stevens is just trying to lay the foundation so that it can be a movement and then you can discuss.
Got it.
It's not a fall.
So is this, is this document something that this school district prepares each year?
Yes.
Okay, and does that give assistance to the school district in collecting data?
Yes.
Okay, I would offer this as a full exhibit, and if the business record is something else. I just have a few questions about, like you, and you referenced two years, November 22nd, 22 and November 23rd. How many students in each one of those years took this?
Yes, about 1,100.
The same amount for both years?
Well, I think maybe we had like 1,000 on 2022 and we had 1,100, 20 something in this year.
What was your role in the preparation of that?
So with the admin team, we created the questions. And then every year, we sit down, we look at the questions again, make sure these are the questions we want to ask. And after we receive back the data, sit down again as a team. And each building has looked to see where they need to focus their efforts. And that becomes their school-wide line indicator on their teacher evaluation.
So it's compiled with your direction?
At my direction? Yes.
By your stewardess?
Yes.
Okay, and it's openly available?
We do share it at board meetings, yes.
Yeah, on the website?
Not the whole survey, no.
If you received records request for it from the Freedom of Information Act, would you reuse it?
Sure.
Is keeping it ordinary course of the district's business?
Yes.
Any objection? I do want to point out the quite deceptive graphic presentation of it, where if you look, minor differences, a shortage of age differences. So there's a, the very first time, there's a 4% difference, and it looks adorable.
Is, is the attorney by sentence identifying this is, this is, goes to the weight?
And so I just want the, to be well aware of the fact that if admitted, we should be looking at the underlying numbers, not at the graphic presentation.
People took the survey, because I noticed that myself.
I'm sure he will have a question on cross-examination.
We don't have.
So is there, is there objection? No objection. Yeah, yeah, no objection. All right, so what number is this, Dr. Stevens?
I think I said that would be 81.
Okay, so respondent 81 is now admitted without objection at the board of ed.
Thank you. Okay, so Dr. Nash, with regard to that climate survey, what information with regard to mental health did it provide you?
Sure, there are some questions that help better understand how.
I think you reminded us of them.
So there are some questions to help guide us in terms of how our students are feeling in our building. Like I mentioned before, I feel connected to at least one adult in my school. You know, connectivity to adults is very important in terms of students' mental health. Some of them are related more to academics, but since on the second page, my teacher really knows who I am as a person. People in my school listen to my ideas on the third page. Also, on the third page, you know, having a problem, there is an adult in my school. I can go to help solve it. Please help us understand, I feel safe in my school. That's important for us to know, right? We want to know, so then if you go to the subsequent pages, like page four and five, you can kind of see where students are feeling most safe or maybe where students are feeling a bit less safe. And that's important for us to know, so then we can, you know, target our efforts using our student voice to guide us.
And with regard to that, what, this particular one, what insight did you gain from these statistics that you gathered?
Right, so what we are seeing is that, you know, compared to last November on a whole, we have students feeling more favorably within school. And of course, you know, there are some that you want to look at, add a little closer, like I feel safe on the bus. That one looks like it's a little decrease. So now we're wondering why. This is the type of survey, this is the survey that I bring to the Student Engagement Steering Committee. In fact, that's what we did. We had a meeting last Wednesday. And they started to dissect this data to make plans for how they were going to find out more information, drill down, if you will, into some of these questions with their peers.
What is the Student Engagement Committee? Who is, who is on that?
Right, so that's a committee that I run just because sometimes still think we can solve all the problems, but we don't really know everything. We need our students to help us. And so it's a committee made up of mid- to 12th graders that we, every 13th grade or so, and they help, they help us understand that we need to do.
And how many students are possibly around that?
Two for each grade, so I mean, it's obviously due to their schedule, but two for each grade.
And have you implemented any suggestions of students?
Yeah, sure, we have. They, based on the climate survey last year, they followed up with another survey. And they really wanted to know from their peers, what would make you attend school more regularly? And the interesting findings came out, but I guess it's not that interesting, makes sense, that they would prefer their classrooms to be more inviting, meaning like comfy seating, softer lighting. And so with our, some of our efforts, they created a catalog for teachers. And teachers had a $50 gift card, if you will, to spend in the catalog. We selected things like waterfall lights or a projector that projects things or those covers that cover the fluorescent lights and make them a little softer. So teachers, all teachers were able to spend $50 in the catalog that the students created to make their classrooms more cozy and inviting.
And how does that affect, if it does, the mental health of the students?
What students told us they, they want in terms of making their classrooms more inviting and attending class on a more regular basis. So hopefully that small change, sounds like a small change, right? But it means a great deal to students.
And what other kind of insights did you get from the students?
Yeah, so as we have seen as adults, sometimes after the pandemic, we have forgotten how to have face-to-face conversations. And we're kind of buried in our places. And so the next project that the Engagement Committee is working on is creating another catalog with board games, and students will be able to find out the board games at lunch. So instead of, you know, kind of just being bored at lunches, we've heard some kids are bored at lunch, or, you know, staring into their device, they can actually engage with others playing the board game.
Wouldn't that be related to social emotional learning?
I hope so. Yeah, I hope that helps our kids out with that.
Okay, any other insights you can think of at the moment?
That's the work of the committee so far, yes.
And how long has this steering committee been in place?
We started it last, it was last fall. What about you?
Do the students communicate with the Board of Education in any way in a regular fashion?
They are not directly reporting. I'm reporting on their behalf.
Have they reported directly in the past?
No.
Okay, so how do the stu, how do you report? In other words, students don't come to the board and say, we went on a field trip or anything like that?
No, so I would, in my superintendent's update, or even as an assistant superintendent, would give an, uh, I usually would, I usually create videos for the Board of Education to watch, so I create videos to either showcase the work of the committee so they can watch that.
Okay, and has that always been the case or there's different before?
No, I have always had that.
Okay, thank you. And how long has the climate survey been in place?
For two years. We had, I shouldn't say that. There was another climate survey kind of before I came, but it was only given in June. You really want to have two points to kind of compare. So we also changed the questions so that the questions are aligned, students, families, and staff.
And explain, you explained to students, all right, what about the family and staff?
Right, family and staff questions are almost the same, or worded differently, right? But they look at the same thing. So I feel connected to one adult in my school. You would have staff, I feel connected to the administration of my school. For families, you would say, I feel connected to my two teachers, something like that.
Okay, and what were the results of?
So we just gave it in November. So far, we've only looked at students. But we have our building administrators do look at it as a whole and then they bring the results of that out to their leadership team.
And what would you suggest in terms of family or the other categories?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, you mentioned the things you did for students, but what kind of things would you do for?
Absolutely, so if something came up, well, like. Absolutely, so if something came up low, like last year, I know it came up low that parents felt that they did not communicate outside of report card time on their student's progress. So this year, that became one of the school-wide goals for schools to make sure that they were taking time during ERD days or 90-minute obligations to reach out to families with a positive phone call or updates on the student's progress. We implemented progress reports after all of our math assessments to really screen the score that a student receives. So those are just a couple of examples, I won't rule on to save time, but that would be an example of how we take action using the climate survey.
Okay, so would you say that this is one of several ways that you get to know the student's needs better?
Yes.
Okay, can you mention any other ways that you get to know the student's needs?
Yes, so our, our building leaders have, like I mentioned before, we have different clubs, particularly at the intermediate school and the high school where administrators or other faculty members are meeting with students on a regular basis. We have our FDL block where faculty is meeting with students on a non-academic basis to really understand their needs. Elementary school, I feel like we've kind of been doing this a long time, but we always have morning meetings and then we have end-of-the-day closing meetings. Responsive classroom is really kind of the basis for our elementary schools. So through a lot of the conversations that we have with students.
So was, does that mean, does that explain your comments earlier that the staff knows through daily interaction with the students what some children in particular may have in terms of the mental health need?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then what, again, what would you do with that information if you, as a teacher or an administrator, saw a need in a particular child?
Right, so, you know, initially, of course, talking to the student, getting more information and then going to the counselor and/or administrator, depending on what the need is. And then, you know, again, it's kind of a different path depending on what the need is, right? But parent meeting, could be meeting with a counselor, it really depends what the need is, phone call.
So this is a daily occurrence, is that interesting? And how does a parent know about any mental health programs that are available?
So every Friday, administrators send out a Friday folder. And anytime we have any of our programs that United Services might be offering in partnership with Tillingham Public Schools, we put the flyer with all the information in there. Anytime that there is a family event, if you will, so we had an attendance night not that long ago. It was a high school back-to-school night, we would set up a table, we'd have a lot of flyers there talking about the different offerings.
And do you ever email or text parents about the information that is available?
So the Friday folders are usually, they're electronic, so not an actual paper folder.
What about at the beginning of the year? Do parents provide it, a lot of papers, or is it all electronic?
So some of the forms, because we do have to sign them or write on them, we provide paper copies, so parents don't have to print.
Do you notify the parents directly, or how, does it come in the school's student's backpack, or how is that provided?
I believe it comes in the student's backpack and there is a follow-up on the Friday folder, that's it. Check your student's backpack for important back-to-school notices.
So that would be for any important notice, you would send a notice on Friday to check the backpack?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so with regard to any services that are available to the parents, would the same be true, you would notify parents of those services? In other words, mental health services in particular?
Or from outside agencies you're talking about?
Outside or either PHR inside or counseling?
That's the mechanism we use, yes.
Okay, so it would be in the Friday folders and/or at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other special times during the year that important notices, other than the first, you know, week of the school year, that go out?
Always will be in the Friday folder, everything will be there.
Okay, and what happens if a parent does not provide you with a written copy that needs to be provided? Do you follow up?
Oh, yes, follow up, yes.
Okay, so would you say that you pretty much reach most of the parents, all of the parents, or what?
Yes, we're pretty relentless, we have to continuously, if we don't get it back, we will find a way to get it back.
Okay, okay, and what happens, the same, if a student is in need of mental health services and you notify the parent once, but you see the student still in need of services and nothing is happening, what happens then, what would you do?
Well, at that point, I would, again, depending on the needs, right? Our counseling staff would be looped in to help the student. Again, that's a hard question answer, because it depends on the need and then what the actual need would be, if any other people need to be looped in.
But what I'm asking is, is you would follow up in some manner?
Yes.
So the student wouldn't just be left on a door? Okay. I want to ask you some questions, a few questions about some of your earlier testimony, necessarily today. Some of which you've already addressed in your other questions, so give me a minute here. I guess one question I have is, you are an employee in the Board of Education, right?
Yes.
And so is the rest of the staff, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, and is it true that you report what is going on in the schools at the Board of Education meetings?
Yes.
As superintendent?
Yes.
Do other members of your staff report to the Board of Education what they've been doing?
Directly, no, but we have student representatives that reach out to all of our principals for an update that they provide to the Board.
Okay, can you explain that a bit further?
Yes, so we have two student representatives on our Board of Education. They reach out to the five principals right before a Board of Education meeting. And they get an update that they need applied to the Board.
An update such as?
Oh, things that are going on in the building, events that are happening or they have just happened. There's also at the end of each month, I produce a, I don't want to say right for, the principals and the departments put together kind of like a catalog and each page highlights or showcases one building or department on things they're proud of, activities that have been happening, updates and stuff.
And what about if something is not quite going right? Do the staff give an update to the Board or in some manner?
That would probably be me, I would probably be the one who talks about things aren't going right, right?
Okay, so, and you have done that in the past?
Yes, sure.
Can you give us an example?
Well, we did that, spent a lot of money on fixing pipes that we hadn't prepared to fix. So that was unexpected.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, does the Board know about most of the issues going on in the school and approve or disapprove of how you're conducting it?
Yes, that's my job to do, not only at the board meetings, but every Friday, in a Friday update, that's a pretty extensive update of the things that have happened that week, so that goes out to the,
Goes out to?
To the Board, sorry.
Okay, so every Friday, the Board gets an update on things that are going good, bad or different?
Yes, right.
Okay, and if they need to put that on the agenda to correct something?
Sure, yes.
And you, do you also suggest putting things on the agenda that need to be addressed?
Yes.
Okay, and have you ever been rejected by the Board for putting anything on the agenda?
No.
Okay. So how many times have you had issues on the agenda that the Board has rejected?
A, I don't know.
In other words, do you get cooperation from the Board in your suggestions or does the Board reject any of those, some of them?
Not in my tenure as superintendent, that has not happened.
How about as assistant superintendent, have you seen that happen?
I was not in charge of creating board agendas and that, I was not at all involved in that. But I do not believe so, but I was not.
But if the Board, you attended board meetings as assistant, right? And those that you attended, did you ever see any pushback from the Board to the administration?
I don't, I don't, do we tell?
No. Okay, thank you. Let's see.
Attorney, Attorney Stevenson, we'd like to take a break if you're, are you ready to finish your up or are you?
I have a few more, but, but.
I can take a, a 10-minute break.
Thank you. Yes, I only have a few more questions. I, I'm forgetting my memory, Dr. Nash. Did I ask you, ask you know of any other school district that hired an absentee co-ordinator?
Attend, oh, uh, yes, but I don't know the city of the schools. I know some school districts do have that.
About how many do you think?
I wouldn't be able to give an answer, I don't know.
Okay, not even smaller, large amount?
No, no problem.
Oh, I did want to ask you about, um, there's our exhibit here, I think, one second. Um, it was exhibit fifty-five, and that has to do with the continually application for art for summer mental health support. I think you testified about that before, but I don't think we have ever gotten that as an admissible exhibit, am I correct? I don't have it as admitted.
I'm just waiting for the turn.
No objections?
Sorry, you can't speak now.
That's right, that's right. This was the, one of the state Department of Education website, uh, letter pad. And I, I had found a tag on it, but I, I'm not sure it is.
Do you agree to?
I have no objection to it. I say there's no objection.
Okay, thank you.
So fifty-five is a good, a full good.
Yes. Okay, Dr. Nash, could you explain what this application for art for summer mental health support is?
Sure, uh, so this is a relatively small grant, um, that we applied for. Uh, we asked for mentors through TEEG. Um, those are one-on-one mentors, um, for students that, um, need to kind of reengage. Um, these mentors will like, you know, understand what the student's interests are, you know, if they really like art, they'll connect them with an art class, whether the community provide transportation to that art class. Um, just kind of be, um, kind of be their person, you know? Um, and then TEEG, uh, I'm sorry, the next part of that was Project Genesis. Um, that's a program we've worked, uh, many years with for students that are usually older, uh, special education students who are kind of in a transitional program.
And this is one of the several, um, programs for connections that the district has made since the vote on generations or before?
TEEG is new, Project Genesis we have in the back.
And again, Project Genesis is the word.
It would say our students, um, without anybody, that are in more of a transitional program.
Okay, and TEEG is more for mental health itself rather than?
That's right, yes.
Okay, and how long is this grant?
Um, so currently we are still accessing this grant, um, with TEEG mentors. I would have to check to see when it actually comes to a close.
Um, I really don't have to any other questions except for one. And to summarize what you've done, is it fair to say that before the vote on generations, you were aware of mental health needs and were meeting the needs to the best of your ability and staff at that time? And also afterwards?
Yes.
And would you say that you could have done more after the rejection of generations for the needs of students, mental health needs?
Yes.
And is that also in part because CHR is providing more, um, services than generations had proposed?
I don't know if they're providing more, um.
Well, it wasn't generations suggested supposed to provide only services in the high school?
Oh, I see what you're saying, I was just going by number of needs, um, right, uh, just in high school.
Okay, and you're, and right now CHR is serving a high school as a medium?
Yes.
Okay, I have another question.
Is that possible? Yes, before I just wanted to get one clarifying question. Uh, what was the mark generally fifty-five? That's collectively three documents, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, come on. Generally fifty-five, I was given three documents, that's, they're all combined to make fifty-five, correct?
Could you answer that, Dr. Nash?
Those are all the grants that were asked to, um, be recocked to be more eligible?
I, I mean, I have no objection, I just want to make sure they're three different documents, that, I had to, right on.
What is exhibit fifty-five? Can you just explain what it consists of?
It is part of the application for art for summer mental health supports, I believe, is that right?
It appears in top.
Dr. Nash, do you have that?
Yes, that, I didn't know what you'd be, um, so that's the first grant. I don't know if you want them to be in separate exhibits or one exhibit with three exhibits. Whether the panel prefers.
Well, I, what I had leveled objection to was this three-page document previously submitted, which was a single grant for forty-four thousand and change. What was supplied was, were not an enlargement of that, but were substantially, uh, separate, regular, uh, grant programs. I don't know what the, I haven't had a chance to go through them. But all I was not in, was an objection to was this three-page one, not to these three new ones that came in today, which I may not object to, but I'd like to know what they are.
Dr. Nash prepared them, I'm sorry, Dr. Nash prepared them as a grant. Dr. Nash?
Sure, no problem, um, so the one is the behavioral health pilot. And the second one is the art of school mental health specialist. I think we may have talked about those last time, is why I've provided all those.
I believe we did.
Are any of them fifty-five to?
Well, fifty-five that I saw was the summer mental health support.
Can, can we revise fifty-fives then to include those documents if there's no objection?
They had no objection.
I just have to know what they are. If you ask me right now, what is exhibit fifty-five, I could not.
I believe they are applications for different types of grants.
I, I just, I needed.
Which is a grant?
Yeah. Organizational matter, I guess.
Sure.
Well, fifty-five that was previously submitted was a three-page document that was in microscopic print.
That, that part I understand.
And the mental health, that's the summer mental health supports, which is a four-page document, uh, just submitted. And there are two other grant applications.
Right.
One eleven-page one of the mental health specialist, a three-page one for, uh, behavioral health pilot, which are, are new, uh, and, uh, were not part of what was previously provided in.
The doc, the documents, this, okay. The behavioral health pilot application was discussed thoroughly in a previous meeting and today. Uh, so that, I believe Dr. Nash had combined them because they were similar grants, is that correct?
Yes, these are all recent.
I should, you're offering them as an exhibit.
As an exhibit, to agree.
I'm not, I'm totally interested in what Dr. Nash has.
Well, I would just explain.
I need to know what the exhibit is, and I, right now I have, normally I would get a staple document, then it's later on it's exhibit fifty-five.
Correct.
I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep, I don't need to interrupt, but I just get the, give us the three documents, only just mark it as fifty-five, et cetera.
Well, I, I have other numbers for the other exhibit, so we, we.
Five eighty-two, eighty-three.
So I would suggest to just.
Is he by the A B or?
Just send it, and the, the scenographer or hardboarder will need a copy of all the exhibits electronically anyway, so if you could just submit them after the hearing to the board. So if you could just submit them after the hearing to, to, you know, copy it, turn it to me and I'll see myself and just have.
Correct. I can do that, but I want to know if it's, if it's, if 55 can be in C rather than, because I have other exhibit or middle.
Surely, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to turn to, Ken?
Well, I have some cross-examination. I was just trying to get clarification because there's three documents that call there. So, um, so, uh, Dr. Nash, just so I have some follow-up questions to the ones that were asked you today by, um, attorney Stevenson. I might be jumping around with this. There's no grand strategy to that, just, you know, just. I'm trying to make up some more. Before you proceed, Attorney McKean, uh, there was some other documents that were given to us. I'd like an explanation of what these are before we move on. One says chronic absence, ADA.
Why don't you deal with that after the hearing? Can you talk to Attorney Stevens?
Then those are previous exhibits that were, I think, unreasonable too, were they not? Yeah.
Yes, that's all it is.
I, I, yeah, just wanting you to be aware, just handing us documents and make them part of the record or make them, just so you're aware.
No problem.
We need them electronically and we need the quote for it.
But the question is, have these been previously submitted, something to a larger size?
I believe they have, and it's subject to being a larger readable size.
Well, that being the case, I would like to know what ADA means. I don't know if they are considered disability. Okay, the other one is chronic absenteeism.
Yes.
And what number are these, do you know?
Twenty was the chronic absenteeism, and I think that twenty-one was the chronic data. Is that correct? We have, we have that labeled as chronic data, KCS. Dr. Nash, could you confirm that that's the same document, because it's labeled now ADA?
Is it number one?
Twenty-one, and it, why is she twenty-one with chronic data, KCS? That's what it was labeled as. Is that the same document we're talking about as the chronic ADA?
Exhibit twenty.
Twenty was the chronic absenteeism.
Yes.
And twenty-one was the chronic data, KCS, which is now your label, ADA, correct?
Yes, you could do it that way.
And our Ashley Mack's what was previously provided, but it's with data. I don't have it.
No objection then? Are we upset, Attorney McKean?
Sort of, yes. I mean, that's.
A future.
What is this twenty-one, is it going to be the answer?
Twenty-one is the ADA, yes.
Okay, and we're substituting what's already in the vote.
Correct.
That's not an objection. We are substituting the chronic data for respondent Exhibit twenty-one. We are substituting the A, the average daily attendance document for respondent twenty. Those are now.
Not for, it's twenty-one is the same. Okay, twenty is the chronic absenteeism.
Can we, could we think this out afterwards? Like, can we, I don't, Attorney McKean has some cross for this. And can we compare all the documents that we answered before, all three of you? So, and, and Attorney McKean, uh, not Attorney McKean, if you can go ahead and ask him.
Thank you so much. There was a testimony, gave you testimony at one. Sorry about that. Um, Attorney Feinstein asked you some questions regarding Killenley Exhibit nine. Basically, you're discussing two-one-one calls, two-eleven calls.
Yes.
Could you explain to the record what is a two-eleven? We all know what nine-one-one is, where does two-one-one?
Sure. Two-one-one would be if you have a student that's really dysregulated, um, experiencing a heightened state of emotions that we as a school staff just can't seem to dysregulate. And so usually after a period of time, we're unsuccessful with our measures, and we will call two-one-one to send a clinician out. Um, the clinician usually is met with a family member, and then the family member and the clinician with the student kind of work on next step.
Okay.
So did we ask, is that what you did?
I did.
You know, Attorney Feinstein was asking a question regarding page one of that. And he noted how the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school monthly iteration ended in March of two thousand twenty-three. If you turn two more pages, the page three of that exhibit nine, there is a replication of that, but it has all, all the relevant months. Do you see that?
Thank you.
Uh, so there's two, two charts. There's the count by month of two-eleven calls, and then percentage of unmet requests. What does that mean as an unmet request?
Sure, so, um, sometimes there is not a clinician that's available. Or it could be that the family member does not want to go through the two-one-one process, would rather handle the situation in a different way. So it could be a variety thing.
So a situation like that, and I know every situation can be different, but what would happen then with a student? What would you do?
Yeah, so it really depends on situation like that. So, you know, if it's something that, you know, a clinician is not available, then we would potentially call nine-one-one.
Okay. Now, looking at the top of the chart, and that's again on page three of Killenley Exhibit nine, the count by month of two-eleven calls. I'm an English major, but I'm a dad figure here with my math skills. And I did some calculations here. And it would appear for the entire school year, the cumulative number for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year was one hundred and sixty-five two-eleven calls. For twenty-one, twenty-two was two hundred and nine, and for twenty-two, twenty-three, two hundred and seven. So with respect to the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, it's fair to say there really was not much difference between that and the twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
Yes.
And, um, so, it's two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one were one hundred and sixty-five. This is again over the course of school year. And two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three was two hundred and seven. That's, uh, that's thirty, wait a second now. I'm gonna mess my calculations up. That's forty-two more over the course of that school year. Do you have an understanding as to why the two-eleven call increased during that period of time?
I do. So the twenty, twenty-one school year was the year we came back hybrid and then went remote. Uh, so we had half of the students half of the time.
Uh, is it also fair to say that they're, well, they're specified to that in respect to twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three? That is, would you say that's a pretty significant amount of two-eleven calls that you have to make? Two hundred and seven?
I don't have a comparison point. So I wouldn't say, I don't know if that, I mean, it's the entire district, so this, this would be for our entire district.
Um, and again, I understand each case can be different. That's a preface on the first question. But let's say you have a student for whom, who has been dysregulated beyond capabilities of the district staff. What would happen after that? Say you make the two-eleven refer a call or what have you. And then let's say the following day, the following week, if a student, is that a indicator that the student needs to be referred for more interventions?
Could possibly be. Um, the clinician that comes to meet the student and the family member usually will provide some kind of plan of next step. And that really depends on the nature of the call and the.
You indicated that, in response to my question, that sometimes the unmet two-eleven call indicates that perhaps, sometimes the parents just don't want to go that route, other times there's no clinicians available. Uh, that is correct?
Yes, if our line.
Okay. I asked that because I noticed Killenley fifty-five, which I was just introduced, and this is the, I think, you know, the, take a look at the three documents. This is the school mental health specialist grant request. At the bottom of the first page, the first, the paragraph, I'm sorry, the paragraph at the bottom of the first page starts out, "There are limited behavioral and mental health supports available within the northeast corner of the state." That's an accurate statement?
So actually, what we have found is that we.
Yeah, we only require the yes, so don't answer that.
Oh.
How would ask, could she answer the question thoroughly?
That's what we write this for. But this just requires a cross. This only required the yes and a no. Well, I'm going to ask you, let me, let me call, so, let's read through that question for a moment. I see your, your name and email address is on the top of this page.
Yes.
Did you make that out? Did you have any delivery? Did you complete this document?
Um, I wrote this with a category.
Okay. So presumably, when you're making a recommendation to the state on a document like this, you are, you're being accurate and truthful, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then it's fair to assume that, when you say there are limited behavioral and mental health supports available within the northeast corner of the state, that was an accurate, that was an accurate reflection of your perception at that point?
At that point.
And you referenced, right after that, you referenced the SAREC survey results, correct? At least as expected, the twenty-eight point two percent of these students who experienced suicidal ideation, and fourteen point seven percent had made a suicide plan?
Yes.
I said eight, I said, I said twenty-eight point two percent were kids who had engaged in telephone. But, uh, in any event, uh, these are the same December two thousand twenty-one SAREC report results that you referenced, correct?
That's right.
Okay. You were asked questions then by Judge Stevenson earlier today, earlier this afternoon, I guess. Or at some point today, I'm sorry. But, um, there came a point, I think you said it was September two thousand twenty-two, where the Killenley Board had cited that they wish to have, provide prior approval to grant applications?
I believe it was at that meeting.
Okay. I believe Ms. Martin also testified as a statement of fact, not so much with the state, but there did come a time that the board said, look, we want to know what are our grant applications? Do you recall that testimony?
I, yeah, I think so.
Okay. And this was a change in their prior policy, correct?
For all grants, yes.
And this was September two thousand twenty-two. This was after, well, this would have been about five months after the ten-four B complaint had filed, correct?
Yes.
Did you have an understanding as to why the board is changing this policy?
Um, I believe they wanted to understand at a better level what was actually being asked for in the grant. Um, so they could understand this better, what was happening in those grants.
Were they unhappy, to the best of your knowledge? Were they happy with what had been set forth in the S R two and ARP S R grant, which referenced the need for increased mental health support?
I don't know about unhappy. I didn't ask them their feelings on that. But they wanted to know, sort of like, T more in the move on grant, I know that.
Apparently, there wouldn't have been a time, you know, what did you say?
I don't know what that means.
Well, that the whole, that the board did not add this policy before, but then once there's an investigation into whether they're providing appropriate mental health support, they suddenly decided to change this policy. You don't think there was any coincidence? You think that was just coincidental?
I don't know.
Okay. Rachel Chalice, the Columbine shooting occurred on April twentieth nineteen ninety-nine. I think it's fair to say that this was before the students who had been killed in the public school were born?
Yes.
Um, would also it fair to say that most students were probably not even aware of the Columbine shooting?
I don't know the answer to that question, to be honest. I'm not sure.
Okay. But it sounds like from your description of Rachel's challenge, it was certainly something that would have imprinted the Columbine shooting on their minds. Is that all fair to say?
Did you say imprinted?
Yeah.
Meaning, would they now know about it?
Well, it's something I would, let's leave it in a different way. Uh, because it's pretty going to be an ambiguous term. It is fair to say then that this Rachel's challenge presentation would have brought it to the forefront of their minds?
If they didn't know about it, yes. If they didn't know about it now?
So sitting there in a school, watching a video about a heinous school shooting in which a number of students were killed. And I know this wasn't your idea, so I'm just, just asking your, could you give your personal opinion about it?
Yes.
How would that lessen students' anxiety?
I don't know if I can answer that question.
Do you think it would lessen students' anxiety?
You're asking me to think for other people. I don't know.
Well, you said.
My own person would think, but that's, that's just me.
Well, you're an educator. Uh, you're, you're an educator, and you have certain different, a lot of different roles, both instructional and administratively. Uh, based upon your experience, do you think something like that would, would serve to lessen students' anxiety?
Hasn't been answered.
So, you're not going to answer?
Oh, I thought I already answered. I don't want to answer for other people. I gave my own, my own thought on myself.
Was there any connection between this presentation about a mass school shooting and the board's decision to hire armed security guards?
Would there be a connection either?
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Not. No, if there was, I wasn't aware of a direct connection.
The, uh, exhibit Killenley is fifteen, which is the Killenley Public School Family Resource Center questionnaire. How can we help you?
Yes.
And what is, and does this send every year to all families?
So, uh, yes, it is sent every year. However, this year, um, it wasn't actually sent to every single school. That was mainly just Good Year, which is our early child care center, where our family resource center is located. So this year we decided it would be something we want to send to our entire district. So yes and no.
Okay, so just to understand, so this year it was sent to all families?
That's right.
Okay. And, uh, do you know the percentage of people? I asked, well, let me, let me preamble that by saying, this questionnaire asks them fairly personal questions. Like, what services does your family currently use, E T F support? Uh, which something for, or heating assistance, clothing assistance, food pantry. Uh, that could be something people might feel a little uncomfortable sharing. So what is the percentage, do you know, of these parents who return this?
Yeah, I mentioned earlier, I can, I can get that, but I just can't, I don't know that right now.
Okay. But this is all pretty much sent based on self-reporting. I mean, we get this, so you really don't know ahead of time whether these physical families are, require mental health support or their kids require mental health support or anything. You basically send it out, and if they respond, you assess it at that point.
Uh, I think what you're saying is when we receive it back, do we then address the needs that have been checked? Yes.
Would you expect, you asked some questions by Attorney Stevenson regarding the establishment of school-based health centers. Were you aware that there's been a statewide study that recommended certain districts for school-based health centers?
Yes.
And were you aware of the fact that Killenley was on that? And were you aware of the fact that Killingley was on that list of districts in which school-based health center was recommended?
Yes.
And were you aware of the fact that they recommended not only one in the high school, but one in the intermediate school as well?
Yes.
So the fact that other school districts, or not all school districts, have school-based health centers, is it true that it was determined that a lot of districts don't require school-based health centers?
Oh, I don't know. I can't answer that one.
Why not?
So if, if they're not in the report, do they not require one? I don't think I'm the person to answer that question.
So with respect to the question from Attorney Stevenson as to whether other districts have or have not, do or do not have school-based health centers, you really can't speak to that in any way, correct?
I just know some do and some don't.
Right. All districts are different, correct?
Yes.
Now, all districts have the same level of, uh, mental health needs for students, is that correct?
Yes.
The, uh, you also had a question about the establishment, excuse me, and I may be misstating the, the title here, I apologize, but the director of student mental health?
Yes.
Um, would it be fair to assume that not all districts believe they require such a position?
I am not answering for other districts. I do that.
Okay. Um, but again, you testified all districts are different, correct?
Indeed.
And I, I think you testified to this in, in the last hearing, and, and I was trying to trip you up, I just can't remember correctly. I just want to confirm my recollection, I should say. Uh, the COTI position was established in January two thousand twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and that was only a couple of months after the State Board of Education issued its November two thousand twenty-two resolution that there appeared to be cause that the Killingley would not implement the education was just a mistake. Given that, would the creation of this position in response to that?
Um, certainly not in direct response.
Well, presumably, prior to then, Killingley did not, or at least Killingley Board, uh, did not believe that such a position was necessary, is that true?
I don't think we've talked about that before.
Well, you recall what discussions led to the creation of that position?
That would have been, um, Superintendent Angeli, um, with Board of Education, so I do not know the nature of those conversations.
He was, uh, testified today that Killingley Public Schools had a pretty good idea of student mental health needs. Is that accurate?
We have a good idea what's now at a certain time, or are you just speaking in general?
In general.
Uh, yes.
So when Superintendent Angeli felt that there was a need for a school-based health center, would it be fair to say that that was in recognition of, uh, the fact that students required additional mental health support?
I would assume, I'd hate to assume for other people, but yes.
Well, you were the assistant superintendent, is it fair to assume that you and Superintendent Angeli discussed these issues?
Nope, that is not fair to assume.
So Superintendent Angeli did not discuss that the, his belief that there needed to be, uh, these supports?
He made that public, specifically speaking, and he didn't include me on all of the conversations that he had.
Well, you attended the August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two meeting, uh, with Superintendent Angeli, Mr. Farron, and Ms. Martin, and Attorney Stevenson at the State Department of Education, correct?
Yes.
And you recall Mr. Angeli discussing the fact that when he came to Killingley, uh, he had a discussion with other administrators, and it was a general recognition that students required more support?
I think so, yes. I think I remember his name.
You were not part of those discussions?
No. So I was, I came in, um, July twenty-twenty-one. I believe those discussions in terms of, that was, thinking about getting a school-based health center had already happened prior to me arriving.
And in fact, you testified at the last hearing that you, you did fill it out, but you did actually hit the submit button, with respect to one of the plans, I think it was the R P S R fund?
Yes.
And those included discussions of the possible school-based health center, correct?
They were documented in there, yes.
Okay. Um, when you, so you said that districts have a pretty good idea of students' mental health needs. When you went to CEREC, December two thousand twenty-one CEREC report, were you surprised by the finding?
I was concerned. Um, yeah, I, I, it was, I was surprised, surprised and concerned.
And, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
No, I mean, concerned personally, wrong.
And do you recall that, um, there was, that this was the report, the results of the report were raised by a number of the public during public comment?
Yeah, I think you asked me that last time, and I actually don't recall that.
Well, let me ask you this. It was never on an actual board agenda, was it?
No, it was, um, we discussed it at the public, um, presentation for, um, school-based health center, February two thousand twenty.
Were you surprised by the amount of people who were, uh, in favor of school-based health center?
No.
Why weren't you surprised?
Why wouldn't I surprise?
I think you said you weren't surprised, so, so why weren't you surprised?
What I believe that community members wanted support to help students, so it wasn't surprising.
Not even the, the, the amount of individuals who were in favor of it?
No, it didn't surprise me.
Wasn't that evidence that, at least from the perspective of parents and students, that student needs were not being met?
Sorry, I missed the first part.
Sure. From the perspective of parents and students, wasn't that evidence that the students' mental health needs were not being met?
From the perspective of parents and students, I believe they wanted more support. I don't know if they felt that the needs were not being met, or they wanted different supports. I don't think I asked that question.
Why wouldn't you ask that question?
I don't know. I did not ask that directly.
Uh, you, you testified that Killingley Public Schools generally have more services, and the connections of outside agencies have strengthened. Uh, you recall testifying to that?
Yes.
And what would you say that these additional services and strengthen connections occurred?
I would say, um, after, um, the hiring of our Director of Mental Health is when we were really able to strengthen those connections. Like I said before, we've always had those connections, um, just without, you know, a central person kind of overseeing those connections. You know, they're not as strong and not as efficient as they possibly could.
Okay, so again, then, it, it occurred with the hiring of the COTI, or, well, I truly hired, I didn't understand that, but, so it, it seemed to have occurred, uh, subsequent to her being appointed to that new position?
What seems to occur?
The, the additional services and strengthen connections.
Uh, some additional services, uh, strengthening connections, yeah. I'm trying to continue to say, we still had, we had those prior, we just, uh, now are more positive. Or, I'm more, organized.
Given the new board, the, the change of board policy with respect to reviewing applications for grants?
Correct.
So theoretically, if Mr. Angeli or you, because you're currently the superintendent, had, had gone to submit that same, uh, S R two or R P S R plan with respect to the student mental health needs, the board theoretically, at least, could reject that, correct?
Theoretically?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Um, you testify, quote, "We always want to know more about our students," quote, quote. You, this was earlier today, you also testified, "We want to better know our students' needs to reach a tail program for them." That's clearly an admirable goal, but, um, and we established during the last hearing, in fact, you just, uh, reiterated in here, the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-one CEREC report was never played on the board agenda, correct?
I do not recall it being on the agenda.
Uh, and as we established during the last hearing, there was no follow-up CEREC survey here in the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
No.
You talk about Ms. Cote, uh, established, her position was established before date the district-wide services being provided to students. Given that, wouldn't it make sense to maybe do a follow-up survey to get technically the threshold of need of students, of students' mental health needs?
Yes, we are going to do that survey, uh, secondly, in January.
A full year after her position was established, correct?
Yes.
How do you tailor services to the two need if the district first has not ascertained what that need is?
We have other ways of gathering that kind of data that's actually a bit more useful, um, because an anonymous survey sometimes is difficult.
And really, you testified, I believe, however, that the CEREC report came up at various board meetings, and there were discussions as to how to respond. Is that what you testified to?
That it came up at various board meetings?
Right.
Yes, I didn't catch the last part of what you just-
And that there were discussions as to how to respond to the results of that report?
I am so sorry, I still didn't catch it.
Sure. I believe you stated earlier today that the CEREC report came up at various board meetings in conjunction with discussions as to how to respond to those, um, report results.
And how to respond?
Yes, how to respond.
Did that come up in?
Okay, let, let, let me ask it a different way.
Okay.
I believe you testified that the CEREC report came up at various board meetings, is that correct?
Yes.
But didn't you indicate that you didn't believe it was on any board agenda?
Right.
And you're aware of the fact, then, of the Freedom of Information Act, that boards can only, are supposed to provide notice of what's going to be on their agenda?
Yes.
So if they didn't provide, if they didn't have an agenda item about CEREC report, but then talked about the CEREC report, would that be a violation of the Freedom of Information Act?
Oh, I see what you're asking. Um, the CEREC report often came up in public comments.
But I know you testified that you can only speak of public comments, about matters that were on the agenda.
Well, it came up.
So some comments that were not related to agenda items were permitted, and others were not, is that what you said?
I don't know. I don't remember. It came up, that's all I know.
Okay, so it came up. So then, so the other part of my original question is, you say it was raised in public comment, the results are made known, and the board's response was what?
To public comments?
To, to, to the problematic responses of the students who took the survey.
Okay. So, um, we, you know, listened to the presentation of generations, that ultimately failed. Um, after that, I've said this many times, um, we continued to provide what we were going to provide within the buildings, whether that was ruler, pyramid, um, F D L blocks, and our staff in terms of counseling, social workers. Um, and then the ad hoc committee was created, um, Kathy, Kathy Coates' position was created. Um, we heard from three other school-based health centers, and we are today.
It happened though, so many months after this was originally raised, I mean, based upon your testimony, it's clear that the board didn't say, hey, wow, wow, we never realized things were this bad, let's put it on the agenda, let's talk about this at the next board meeting. That never happened, correct?
If you're asking me if it was on the agenda, it was not on the agenda.
I'm a little confused about the, the perjury testimony, and I know you're only testifying your original question, but you talk about this region three, and region three, that's a group of districts up in the northeast corner?
Uh, eastern side of the state.
Okay. Um, and that there was, I, I believe I got this correctly, that there was twelve point one percent of students in region three who had also exhibited suicidal ideation?
Suicidal mania.
I, I didn't really understand what point of that was. The fact that twelve point one percent of students in other districts might have talked about suicide plan, did that lessen at all the fact that fourteen point seven percent of Killingley students had engaged in suicide planning?
Did it lessen? No.
So frankly, what was happening in other districts, that was irrelevant to what was going on in Killingley, isn't that true?
Irrelevant, I shouldn't use that word, so concerning, um, but irrelevant sounds, it's not a good word to use there.
Well, it's obviously relevant, but I'm just saying, as far as the percentages that were reflected in the CEREC report for Killingley students, a twelve point one percent finding for other school districts really had nothing to do with what Killingley was dealing with, correct?
Uh, no, I hope that other school districts were able to do what they needed to do for their students.
Um, you're, you're talking, uh, you keep the testimony or ask questions about the students in need of mental health services, but parents do not respond to the outreach that you would, by you, I don't mean you personally, but the district within movement school staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, if the parents are not following up, would the student, and the student was really in crisis, would that student be able to access C H R, C H R services?
If a student was in a crisis?
Well, if a student, if the student was exhibiting mental health need for such significant, that he would reach out to the parents, parents, I'm sorry, parents never get back to you, or seem indifferent, would that student be able to give a referral to C H R?
Um, you know, I don't know exactly, but we would always have parents come in. Um, and if parents are being that indifferent, then that could, that's potentially a D C F referral.
Have you had any situations where you had to make D C F referrals in such cases?
Not in the specific case that you just had one.
Um, I have a few more questions. I'm trying to find, I don't know here. Do you recall, uh, you were being asked about, and I, and I think you said there are approximately seven hundred fifty-four students at, at Killingley High School, and that there are six hundred, approximately six hundred and seventy at Killingley Intermediate School?
Yes.
So, uh, that would be roughly, I can't add, I'm too much, I'm on math, I gotta, I gotta do a quick calculation. That'd be fourteen hundred twenty-four students.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. And I think you said that there are twenty-three students who are currently being at C H R?
Maybe a bit more now, but.
Okay, but when you say a bit more, what do you, like, a couple, ten more, you know?
I would say between five, five and seven.
Five and seven. Um, so it could be up to about thirty. I think that's to be about two percent of that student population that's being serviced by C H R. Point zero two percent, excuse me, not two percent, but point zero two percent students are being serviced. Who's saying the other students who might have mental health needs?
So many of our students have outside conditions that they have been seeing, but if not, we have our staff, social workers and health workers.
Okay, I'm gonna hand, I'm gonna hand you, I'm sorry, I highlighted some parts of this, but I just realized that Attorney Feinstein has not brought additional copies of this document. Somebody give mine, it's just like this. I have a copy, a digital copy, and this is Intervene's 22, I think, I'm sorry, Intervene's 22 that got submitted today, submitted by Attorney Feinstein. Thank you, you're welcome. This is one, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. All right, this is, these are copies of what appears to have been PowerPoint presentation, and you're, you're one of the individuals, I believe, part of the team who presented this?
Yes, I was on the panel.
Okay. And this had to do with generations, correct?
Yes.
Now, during that August 26, 2022 meeting at the CSE, do you recall Mr. Angeli saying that because they had prior counseling from outside, a discovery, I believe it was, that he had no reason to believe the board would be opposed to an SPHC?
Yeah, I don't remember if he disclosed that, but that sounds reasonable.
Okay. All right, so these, these figures in here were all subject to your knowledge, accurate, correct?
That's mine.
Okay. Well, you're part of the panel that presented the presentation, obviously you're gonna, yes, subject to your knowledge, these are all correct. If you go through them, and I'm sorry, it's not paginated, so I can't give you the actual page number, but, I actually, I can, it's, okay, mine is page 13. And it's heading a school counselor versus therapist. So that distinguishes between services the school counselor provides and ones that an SPHC therapist could provide, correct?
Yes.
And if you look through this on the left, there really, with respect to school counselor, there's really not any therapeutic services being provided, isn't that true?
Can you describe what you mean by therapeutic?
Well, on the right, therapist fulfills students, assesses students' mental health needs, evidence-based interventions to treat symptoms and conditions, ongoing slash long-term therapy, collaborate with potential medication, so forth and so on. So those are therapeutic mental health interventions. There are not similar duties listed in the school counselor, is that correct?
Yes.
So the fact, I'm curious about that, because Attorney Stevenson asked you some questions, you don't have to look at it, I'm not gonna ask you actually the documents, but Attorney Stevenson had you look at some documents that exhibit page 28 and 29 about the ratio of school counselors to students, do you recall that?
Yes.
But if school counselors that aren't really providing therapeutic interventions, what is irrelevant to that ratio?
The relevance of the ratio is that we have many trained individuals, adults in our building, that can help students in the short term. I think, you know, the bigger difference there is with a clinician is that it's more long-term.
Well, I would note that that particular slide does not give any indication as to the duration of intervention at all. I feel like you just acknowledged it's not really having therapeutic components. The fact that they were, I think you may be correct, I think Attorney Feinstein was asking you a question about, I think it was 600 responsive visits to the school counselor. I think you're right, that was 2022, 2023 school year, I think it was the 21, 22. Because I know you referenced it in your affidavit that submitted the response to the complaint. So you have the 600, 600-plus responsive visits, and we established it the last hearing, that a triage system, and that's my term, a counseling priority system had to establish for the kids who had most needs?
In 21, 22?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if their duties did include therapeutic interventions, were they basically a situation that things were just so intense that school counselors had to press into service?
Sorry, I missed the first part of that question.
Sure. Is it fair to assume, then, that matters had become so, that student mental health need had become so pronounced, that the school counselors, whose duties did not seem to include therapeutic intervention, had to be pressed into service?
More so the number. So we were just receiving a higher number of students coming to counseling. I cannot speak to the need of why students were coming down, because that would be hard to convey, but the number, it was the sheer number.
I'd say the PowerPoint that you're looking at right now, that was Intervene's 22, it's a very impressive presentation. And I presume that you were, you were in support of that presentation?
Yes.
And yet, despite this, and despite the results of the CRX report, the Killingly Board voted, or voted not to implement a school-based health center, is that correct?
Yes, at that time.
And weren't there some subsequent attempts by, I believe, some board members to resurrect the whole idea of a school-based health center? I mean, during, I mean, during like the 21, 22 school year, after it was voted down?
Yes.
Wasn't there some subsequent meetings where one or two of the board members said, hey, we'd like this to be back on the agenda?
Uh, yes.
But that was voted down as well, correct?
Yes.
But then, subsequent to the October 2022 investigation report, and the State Board's number of 2022 revolution, certain interventions were implemented, such as the creation of the Director of Student Mental Health Services, correct?
Yes.
And the formation of the ad hoc committee?
Yes.
The, with respect to CHR, do you know what the status of hiring for therapists is right now?
Yes, so the position has been posted, but CHR that does the hiring, not us.
Correct, correct.
So it's been posted, do I know if they interview that or not?
And do you have an understanding as to what the hope is to, or CHR's hope is as far as staffing, like how many people would like to have?
You know, if he needed there, CHR seems very willing to work with us, to continue to increase the number of counselors they are already.
Okay. And you testified before that there, I believe twenty counselors, I don't know if they both are, or maybe they split them to the days. There's two days that the Intervene School.
Yes.
Are both counselors there, both of those two days, or one on one day, one on the other?
Oh, sorry, one on one day, one on the other.
And then the high schools, there's one day away, correct?
Yes.
And you said CHR, CHR had requested that you not do, do, like, mass mailing or notification as to the services, because they, they don't have the power, or something?
Initially, yes, they could go, go straight that way.
Okay, you say initially, has that changed?
So I feel like we're still in the initial phase.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I forgot, sorry. Do you have in front of you daily lead, 51?
Is it a mental health specialist?
Yes.
I do have that, that doesn't refer to her.
Okay. All right, I, you do have, I believe, now I can provide you with another copy. Unlike my esteemed colleagues here, I have a two of this that I've submitted, so can we give you your copy?
I have that one, I think it's...
This one here?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna ask you, take a look at the fourth page, down at the bottom, percentage of students chronically absent. If you see that, Killingly's number has increased 20, to 28.6 during the 2022, 23 school year, from 26.7 during the 21, 22 school year, correct?
Yes.
And that would in fact, it's one of the reasons for the outreach during the summer of 2023, trying to use the LEAP program and other interventions to try to get that chronic absence given down?
Yes.
Do you understand, or not understand, but do you know whether there's a connection between students who are chronically absent and those students who are curling up CHR's, I think it's a patient, but CHR's list?
I do not know that.
Okay. And the next page, I think we went over this in the last hearing, so I apologize. The suspension expulsion rate went from 10.3 to 12.2 percent between the 21, 22 and 22, 23 school year, correct?
Yes, yes.
And does that continue to be an issue, the disciplinary concerns?
So we have decreased our offered referrals quite a bit at the high schools, using some interventions that we've put into place. Do I have suspension expulsion data right? This, you know, I don't...
How about yours? Nine, only the nine I already asked you about. I'm not getting over the top of it yet, but you said, I'm looking for it, but that's the 211 calls. Do you know what the rate of 211 calls are so far this school year?
I do not have that.
Okay. All right, I'll look for it, thank you. I have my...
Dr. Nash, I just have a quick question before we move on to our next hearing. This survey that you were, that you referenced, I forgot to ask, is there any way that if, can a child, a student write a comment?
We don't have an open-ended section on that one.
So it doesn't, so is there any way if they were to rate themselves in a way, is it red flagged in any way? That it could red flag a student, that she would know if it was an alarming answer to one of them? That she was...
It's an anonymous survey.
Right, so there's no way of red flagging, or what email it would have come off of if there was something that was concerning?
No, it's a survey, so I don't think you could do that.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Our next hearing, we're planning to set up with the January 17th. Location to be determined, one, or, I'm throwing, but that will be set as well, maybe next.
I would like to ask, that we agree that this witness is done, that she go back to where in Killingly Schools, that we waive all further recross and redirect, so a lot of that to happen?
I am checked. So you're planning to call Dr. Nash again?
Yes, for we, correct, redo it.
In which case I'll, I'll reserve my, my recross.
We redo it.
I would, I mean, I, I, obviously, I got my, my recross in, so I would, I would join with Attorney Feinstein's suggestion. The panel certainly has the ability to manage the hearing, and I think we're at two levels of repetition that are very tedious.
Do I have a question?
Yeah.
I know we're about to wrap up, this is kind of burning for me, and, thank you.
Can you read a question with us?
Yeah, is that, are we still in session?
Yes, yes.
You know, you provided a lot of personal reflection in your, in your answers and comments, which I really appreciate. And when Attorney Stevenson was questioning you and she gave numbers based on the percentages of young people who had plans to commit suicide as they self-disclosed, and those numbers took out to 94, 94 out of, I think, 700. How did you, as an educator, and, you know, you talked about being a mom as well earlier, which I see in you, how did you feel about those numbers?
Those numbers are high, those numbers are highly concerning to me.
Yep.
Yes, they're very concerning. You know, those are the kind of numbers that you hear about 94.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, we will, we will reconvene on January 17th.
Happy...
Motion to adjourn?
No motion. Okay, sorry. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All of us, thank you.